Calling to order, the Select Board meeting for April 15th, 2025. This meeting is being broadcast by the Needham channel, the Town's YouTube channel, and via Zoom, and is being recorded for publication in later viewing. In accordance with the open meeting law, if anyone else in attendance wishes to record the meeting, they're required to notify the Chair first so that the Chair may notify our other attendees. I have received notification from the Needham Observer, but if there's anyone else in attendance that wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at this time. Okay, perfect. Thank you very much. You all been on the frail home movies wrapping up. Okay. Next up, we have public comment. Is there anyone in the room who wishes to make a public comment? Is there anyone Zoom who wishes to make?
None.
I'm sorry?
No.
None? Okay. Next up, we have Select Board reorganization. I would call for nominations for the Select Board. Although, I love this position. It is great. We had an election. Congratulations to Heidi Frail. I would nominate Heidi Frail to be Chair of the Select Board.
Second.
Okay. Discussion. All right. Let's have a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, unanimous. Next, do we?
I would, Mr. Chair, I would nominate Kathy Dow for Vice Chair.
Second. Okay, discussion. Okay, have a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Congratulations, Kathy.
Thank you.
All right.
I would like to nominate Mary Ann Cooley for Clerk.
Second. So I would interrupt at this point and say thank you very much for the nomination. The Select Board actually has a strong tradition of going in order for rotation and following that particular rotation, and thus, I'm sort of up because of my tenure on the Board. But given that I have stated that I do not plan to run again, I would like to say thank you, and I'll decline that role, and I would like to nominate Josh Levy.
Second.
Thank you.
Discussion. All right. Mary Ann, thank you for all your service, though. It was great.
I got one more here.
I know, but still. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, congratulations. Clerk. All right. So now we reorganize and have to change our seating arrangements.
Ashley, let me see, where am I going?
Take your stuff.
Thank you.
Mary Ann, you were made four.
I'm right where I am.
You were made four. Josh is five. I mean, three.
Yeah.
These chairs move so comfortably.
So awkward.
Did you send that down to Josh?
I'm getting it for you. Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
I just put one on the floor.
That might...
Move it next time.
Would you grab me a eight?
Thank you.
Hi, Chris.
Hey.
You're next to me.
This is since '21. Oh, honey.
Right, everybody.
We have to do... Committee Secretary and Recording Secretary.
There are a few more votes.
Yeah, a few more votes.
So there are. So the Select Board regular meeting schedule for the year is listed in our packet. Do we need to go through these dates?
No, you should adopt them, but I would note that September 23rd is a Wednesday, and November 12th is a Wednesday. And your final meeting is the 14th, is listed as the 14th of April. That's actually the election, so we'll fix that one next year, but it'll, as is your tradition, be either the 15th or the following week. But that would be very late.
Yes. Okay. So I would take a motion to approve this calendar.
I move that the Select Board adopt the meeting schedule as listed.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, let's have a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. That's one down. And then we have, I can still make a motion, right? Okay. Excuse me, then I'm going to nominate Miles Tucker to continue, I think, being our Committee Secretary for the Select Board.
Second.
I don't know if we need any affirmative nod from Miles. Okay, all right, fantastic. Poor guy, doesn't get a say. Okay. Any discussion? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Excellent. And then for Recording Secretary, anybody want to make a motion?
I would nominate Susan Metropol as our Recording Secretary.
Second.
Excellent. Any discussion?
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Excellent. And then for Recording Secretary, anybody want to make a motion?
I would nominate Susan Metropol as our Recording Secretary.
Second.
Excellent. Any discussion?
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. All set. Oh, that's right. All right, well, we are devastated to see you abandon the chair. Literally, the chair. But appreciate your service, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Nice packaging.
Great wrapping. This is awesome.
Kevin, there are some lines we'll never miss.
See, must we adjourn? Right? You never want to adjourn.
It comes off, too. You can gavel at home.
All right. I'll try not to break this one.
I'm bored.
See, it works. That's awesome. Thank you very much. All right. This goes on the wall. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, congratulations. All right, so next order of business is a public hearing for an Eversource grant of location, and we have Joanne Callender joining us from Eversource. This is very hard to see.
It is.
From the center here. Hi, Joanne.
Hey.
We don't hear you, Joanne.
She's muted.
There you go. Hi. So fill us in.
...grant location to install approximately 44 feet of conduit into Ever Water Drive, and this is to provide service to new home at 124 Ever Water Drive.
Edgewater, right? Edgewater, yeah.
Edgewater.
Great. Is everything in order? Yes. Okay. This is a public hearing. Do my colleagues have anything they want to say? Okay, anybody?
Yeah, actually, I'm just wondering, is, on the two maps, is it flipped in the topo map? It just looks like Edgewater is onto the, Charles Riverside is on the east side, and on the first map, it appears that's not. I just wanted to know if the maps are flipped. It's the same property, I guess, 124. Can we live with it?
Probably using different mapping tools.
Okay.
Those are provided by Public Works to help the Board understand where the project is.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so this is a public hearing, so is there any member of the public who wishes to comment?
Here or online.
Here or online, yeah.
I have hands on Zoom.
Okay. Any discussion?
I'd be happy to make a motion.
Please.
I move that the Select Board approve and sign a petition from Eversource Energy to install approximately 44 feet of conduit in Edgewater Drive.
Second. Excellent. Any discussion? Okay, so we come to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
And none opposed. Excellent. And Joanne, I think we have one more.
Yes, we're seeking a grant location to install approximately 24 feet of conduit into South Street, and this is to provide underground service to a new home at 1266 South Street.
Okay, great, and I assume everything's in order?
Yes.
Okay, fantastic. Any comments?
I don't have any questions.
Okay, any public comment?
What happens, Mr. Chair?
Oh. Madam Chair, Miles reminds us that the public hearings were advertised at 6:15 and 6:20, so if we could hang on for the second one.
Okay. I'll open my gift again.
Excellent. Maybe we could move the consent agenda. Someone was so inclined.
Madam Chair, I move the consent agenda.
Second.
Excellent. Any comments? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. We do have an appointment as well, so I would also move the appointment calendar. Thank you.
I couldn't get there fast enough just to confirm. I'm going, I think there's one.
Yes, there is one appointment. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we have appointments. We have a second for the appointments.
Second.
Excellent, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Excellent. Okay, do we want to pick the next thing on our list?
Let's see. I don't know if the Town Manager may have any comments she could make.
Sure. Let me start with the emergency nonessential outdoor water use restriction. So at your meeting on March 25th, you authorized me to delegate or rescind the emergency nonessential water use restriction under the general bylaws, and the Drought Management Task Force on April 8th voted to recommend placing the southeast region where we are in a Level 1 drought category. So therefore, I declared the emergency, and we began notifying the public about the impact of the, what is essentially a water ban. So it limits watering to one day a week on Sunday by irrigation system before 9:00 or after 5:00. Handheld watering is allowed seven days a week. And again, the Board had voted the following exemptions: irrigation of public parks and recreational fields before 9:00 and after 5:00; irrigation to establish replanted or resodded lawn plantings only in May; and suns in the current calendar year for homes or businesses newly constructed in the past 12 months. The Town's website will just continue to provide information and education, and hopefully people have questions about, you know, hopefully we got it early enough, even though it seems grand every day since, the way they could do that. So can I just ask, is there a mandatory, like, length for this water restriction, or until the MWR decides otherwise? Until the Drought Management Task Force moves us from Level 1, yeah. So they need the, like, the seventh of every month. Okay, and so presumably, the rollback of that decision would go out by the same means? Yes. Yeah.
Madam Chair, may I ask, have there been any questions or comments?
We haven't had any in our office, so... I haven't heard from the Director of Public Works that they're being overwhelmed. I mean, it's been raining. It's been raining since.
I know.
So it probably just hasn't come up yet. So Madam Chair, be appropriate to ask if there were any for the 6:15 hearing, if anybody is here who had comments online for that one? Yes, so we, in this room, we already completed the public hearing, but we could reopen it, given that we jumped the gun a little bit, timing-wise. So is there anybody online? I don't think anyone else has come into the room.
That's true.
Okay, so do we get to just leave that? That's fine, okay. So then we'll continue on with the second public hearing. Thanks for your patience, Joanne. Well, it's not 6:20 yet, so I'll happily move on to our spring fling. Excellent. Okay. So on May 3rd, Saturday, May 3rd, from 5:00 to 8:00, at Greensfield, as part of a goal discussion by the Board to have events that bring the community together, we will be having an all-ages dance party, and this is going to be running from 5:00 to 8:00, and we'll have items suitable for young folks, and then people who want to come by with, keep their kids with them, or dance, and we're going to have DJs and petting animals and bouncy houses and things like that. So I think we all saw when Sunita Williams came down that the whole community really was enjoying getting together, and I hope that people will see this. We're finalizing the decisions on the timing and location today and tomorrow, and we should have something out this week to the public, so we're spreading that out through our usual channels. I don't remember us being early very long. So, as you know, we've heard quite some feedback from residents and businesses about the Envision Needham Center project, and I wanted to let you know that staff are organizing a couple of meetings early morning and evening for businesses in, along the Great Plan Ave corridor in early May, and so we'll be sending a couple of employees out to the businesses with the fire to make sure they know about it, and the purpose of the meetings is to lay out, like, the plans that have been proposed by Envision Needham Center and the consultants, the different options, the things that they traded off, and then we are recommending a public hearing on May 13th with the Board, and this way, interested people who go to the meetings the week before will have a lot more information to help inform the questions that they have, and to ask more questions of the Board and give their feedback. So it's a little bit of a cart before the horse, maybe, to have the hearing without, you know, a full presentation, because sometimes when you hear it that night, it's hard to process. So staff will be doing the presentations, showing what Envision Needham has been working on, and then early, I think, 6:30, 6:30 on May 13th, we're looking at the public hearing to talk about what's next on that project, and then the Board will make a decision. I think I've talked long enough. And I think we have some potential candidates to fill the business seats. Heard at least one, yeah. Okay, well, look at that, it's 6:20. Let's talk about a grant location for 1266 South Street. Joanne?
Yes, again, Eversource is seeking a grant location to install approximately 24 feet of conduit into South Street, and that is to provide new underground service to the new home at 1266 South Street.
Fabulous.
Thank you.
We have already determined that everything is in order, and the Board has no questions. Is there anyone in the room or online who now would like to make a comment?
No, yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so I don't recall if we got to the point where we had a motion.
Madam Chair, I move that the Select Board approve and sign a petition from Eversource Energy to install approximately 24 feet of conduit in South Street. Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And none opposed. That's excellent. However, it presents another problem, which is that we are now early for our next...
That's not legally mandated, so we can...
Good night. Thank you, Joanne. I did happen to see Police Chief walk by, so nothing else, perhaps we could start that.
I have the floodplain.
Right, but at 6:30. But that's, yeah, it's just that no one's here.
The Planning Board's also meeting at 7:00, so we really can't swap them. And hopefully, being a little early will be helpful in that.
Yes, exactly. But you certainly can start to take positions on articles in the warrant that are not waiting on a presentation tonight. Okay. Do we want to get started with that? I feel like...
How much, how long?
How many get into her?
Yeah.
It's only seven minutes. And it looks like members of the Planning Board are assembling, so why don't we just...
It's a long time. We could get through some of these.
I feel like we just get into a roll, and then we'll have to stop. So I think Miles is rounding people up.
Let's take a moment to advertise this wonderful document by Dave Davison, the debt financing outlook. Anyone would like to read it? There should be a copy online, I believe, right?
Dave will be presenting at your next meeting as well?
Perfect.
That is quite a chunky book. Everyone's not here.
I would say we could move a couple of articles.
What about committee reports?
Let's do committee reports. Shall I start with Large House?
Please.
So the Large House Committee met, I don't remember when, last week, I think, Monday, before the election.
Monday before the election.
And what I would say is that there, it was a status update meeting because they are presenting tonight before the Planning Board, an update, again, with where the committee is. At a basic level, there is broad agreement that the goal of the Large House Committee is to understand the mass of a building, and that that is what they're focused on. There had been all kinds of discussion about, should you include all the attic, and should you include all the floor, and they're really coming back to what we're trying to understand is the mass that people actually are looking at. Within that idea, there was, they had met previously with the Wellesley Planning Board Chair at the prior meeting, and having more discussion about that, there's also, I'd say, broad consensus that they like what has occurred under the Wellesley T-Lag structure, but they find that structure to be likely onerous for implementing. There's a concern about the burden of implementation, but the how it's calculated and the result of that calculation that has clearly resulted in buildings that are smaller than Needham's are for the general house and a house that's more appropriate, it feels, to the size of the older neighborhood, although we found by driving streets that so many neighborhoods have already been almost completely rebuilt, so we're in sort of a different place. But there was discussion about how do we take some of the good of that, and how do we think about how it might apply? Their volume of construction is lower than the Town of Needham's, about a third, frankly. So it would have, and they're already taking more than 50% of their meetings for this purpose, so the idea of adding that times three to the existing Planning Board meeting seems like it's probably not the way to go. So there'll be more discussion about how that might be. The committee has previously visited a set of small, non-conforming lots across town to talk about reactions to large houses that have been built on those lots. A new set of houses, homes, has been put forward for the committee to visit, which are a set of new houses built on conforming lots, to understand, again, what is the sense of those particular buildings. I think there is a sense largely that it's the smaller, non-conforming lots that have been the most challenging, but we'll see if that is, in fact, a true thought once we've been to all of them. The last thing I want to, point I want to make is that there was a timeline that was laid out, talking about when is the committee trying to get to a recommendation that includes public input at a couple of stages. And that, by walking through what that would take to get public input and figure out what some proposals might be, gets a recommendation to get to it. So all of this is long, with multiple opportunities for the public to weigh in. There is no proposal yet, so that will be developed, but lots of data coming in, and some consensus around certain issues starting to form.
Yeah, so just to clarify, there's public process during the committee work, and then there's public process on the part of the Planning Board.
During the Planning Board work. Both stages, correct.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mary Ann. Since we know that the Planning Board has an obligation, like ASAP, why don't we invite them up, or whoever is going to be joining us from the Planning Board?
The whole gang.
The whole gang. To talk about floodplains. Yes. So, and we will welcome our newest colleague on the Planning Board.
Thank you.
And everyone else, if you could, maybe we'll start with introductions for the viewing audience.
Oh, sure. I'm Lee Newman, I'm Director of Planning and Community Development.
Oh, my goodness, so sorry.
I already called the Vice Chair. Eric Greenberg, the newest member of the Planning Board.
And Justin Mahoney.
Excellent. So fill us in, what's going on with the planning, with the new floodplain?
So we have two zoning articles that we're preparing to present at the special town meeting, and this is basically required in order for the town to maintain its compliance under FEMA, and to ensure that residents have access to flood insurance. We last did this in 2012, when FEMA had last released its maps, but they've done updated maps. Massachusetts, I mean, Needham is one of the communities that where the maps have been updated, and so we're required to basically recognize these updated maps and reflect them in our zoning parameters or our zoning framework. So there are two articles. One article basically is recognizing the maps, and FEMA is also requiring that we revise some of the regulations that we have within our floodplain district to meet their current requirements. Apparently, these requirements were actually imposed on other communities across the country, but in Massachusetts, they were never really mandated to be accepted, so I think FEMA's playing some catch-up in Massachusetts, and so they are requiring that we update the zoning parameters in terms of how we regulate the use, and what kinds of requirements we're imposing on people who are proposing to do development within the floodplain district. So as part of the process, we do meet with DCR, which is FEMA's representative here. They review our zoning to make sure that we have captured all the requirements that FEMA's requiring of us, and Chris Heap, the Town Council, and myself have shared the draft with them, they have reviewed it, and they've assured us that if it's adopted in the form that is presented to you tonight and by town meeting, that Needham will be deemed to be compliant, and the maps will then be accepted in July of 2025. So briefly, just the changes that are being made under the article itself, is they required an updated statement of purpose. They asked us to designate a community floodplain administrator. They required that we include an updated set of definitions, and clarify that any activities or uses within the district will require a special permit, and they've required some notification requirements to them of any changes that the town is aware of as it relates to floodplain data that's collected during this interim period between the time that the 2025 map is done and the times they issue new maps, and then there are some other standards that they've also required that we include in the revised bylaw. So it's two articles. One is basically recognizing the map and updating the zoning, and the third is basically a map change to reflect the new elevations on the town's zoning apps.
So may I ask, the administrator?
The town engineer was designated as the administrator in the bylaw.
Okay. And what does the administrator do, precisely?
Well, I think the administrator is responsible for sharing with, for example, if there's changes in Needham in terms of what flood flooding we're experiencing, that's maybe not represented on the maps, there's coordination between the town administrator. The administrator is also, I think, if there's any questions about where the floodplain line actually is, is involved in actually clarifying that on the ground.
Super. Thanks.
Madam Chair, can we post these on the screen for people to see? Do we have them?
Yeah, the maps are actually, I did...
Our materials.
They were in the... I think it was part of your packet, actually. There are two maps.
They're huge.
Well, they're the zoning...
Yeah.
And Tom, actually, Ryder is here, because he's in the engineering department. We asked them, actually, to show basically where was the line in 2011, and where, 2012, excuse me, and now where is the line in 2025, and he can walk you through, I think, maybe the maps are presented, what the actual changes are.
They're so big, we don't know. They're...
Okay.
They asked us to designate a community floodplain administrator. They required that we include an updated set of definitions and clarify that any activities or uses within the district will require a special permit. And they've required some notification requirements to them of any changes that the town is aware of as it relates to floodplain data that's collected during this interim period between the time that the 2025 map is done and the times they issue new maps. And then there are some other standards that they've also required that we include in the revised bylaw. So it's two articles. One is basically recognizing the map and updating the zoning. And the third is basically a map change to reflect the new elevations on the town's zoning apps.
So may I ask, the administrator, what?
The town engineer is being designated, was designated as the administrator, administrator in the, in the bylaw.
Okay. And what does the administrator do, precisely?
Well, I think the administrator is responsible for sharing with, for example, if there's changes in Needham in terms of what the flood, what flood flooding we're experiencing that's maybe not represented on the maps, there's coordination between the town administrator. The administrator is also, I think, if there's any questions about where the floodplain line actually is, is involved in actually clarifying that on the ground.
Super. Thanks.
Can we post these on the screen for people to see? Do we have them?
Yeah, the maps are actually, I did.
Our materials.
They were in the. I think it was part of, it was part of your packet, actually. There are two maps.
They're huge.
Well, they're, well, they're the zoning.
Yeah.
And Tom actually Ryder is here, his engineering, the engineering department. We asked them actually to show basically where was the line in 2011 and where, 2012, excuse me, and now where is the line in 2025. And he can walk you through, I think, maybe the maps are presented, what the actual changes are.
They're so big, we don't know.
Well, they're.
All right. I think it's one-to-one. The maps are huge. Thank you.
Okay, so it sounds like we can't display the maps.
Okay.
But they are in the package.
Yeah, so Tom Ryder, town engineer.
This chair, we can't.
Here, Mike.
They have.
Changes are very small. As far as the southwest side of the town where the Charles River is, the elevations have changed by a few tenths to be lower than existing. Areas on the north side, northwest, have increased slightly by a few tenths of a foot. And there are a few other areas near 128, near the ramps that were added. And those are on town land, so it doesn't affect any of the private properties. So all in all, it's, it's pretty, it's pretty similar to the existing conditions right now.
Is Needham tilting? Is it geologically moving like that?
So as far as, well, the study is just more robust, so they, they took a look at it a little bit closer, so.
Tom, can I concur with what their conclusions were? Does that match our experience? Or is there something that we think is missed here? That's one of the questions.
Yes, so I actually would, so I do concur. There's a few other areas that they did add, such as Rosemary and Walker Pond, and that, you know, should have been in the flood area anyways because it's water. And, but as far as observations, yes, I do concur, yeah.
Chair. In terms of the insurance that you mentioned, the flood insurance, is it just as simple that we need to adopt these in order for people to buy flood insurance with the national program?
To be eligible for it, yes.
And so if we didn't do this, homeowners could not buy the flood insurance?
That's correct. We have to be compliant with the law in order for them to be eligible for it.
Were affected property owners within the proposed district notified?
Not personally notified. I mean, the notification was the same kind of notification that we would do for zoning in general, which is public, public, you know, publishing in the paper.
But you don't have to send a letter?
We don't need to send them individual.
We actually will. We intend to do that. Town engineers, making sure that the homes that are in the floodplain and anything that got moved in and out, and the DPW will notify them so they know what's happening.
Yeah.
So sorry, is that everyone in the floodplain or is it just the change?
So, so there's no additional house, house structures in the floodplain, as far as we could find so far. We're still, there are properties that are in the floodplain that the structure's not affected by it. So we're, we're creating a couple of letters to go out. Obviously, the, all the properties is going to be a large amount, but the house structures that are in the floodplain will be a smaller, smaller number. And those are existing already, so they should be having flood insurance already, so.
Thank you. Great. And it varies, right? It goes below an inch, but it varies within the different properties.
Yeah, so it's just a few, yeah, a few tenths, yeah, a few inches.
Yeah. And we were before the Finance Committee last week, and they, they basically are taking no stand-up because they, they're so no financial related to the town.
Anything else we need to know? Thanks for, thanks for being here.
Well, the Planning Board did hold a public hearing on it and nobody, there were no public, public comments on the article. And the Board, Planning Board did vote to recommend a town meeting that both articles be adopted.
And there were no comments, actually. Not on the, there were no.
No, I mean, no, nobody even attended for the hearing, so it was a pretty quiet night.
Well, I think it's right.
So there were no concerns that were obvious with no attendance?
Yeah, I mean, there's certainly very little change at all.
Yeah. Well, we appreciate you coming, especially as we know you have your own meeting to get to, so thank you for being here.
I'll head on downstairs.
Okay, so our next order of business is the Police Department Annual Report. And so we're joined by the Chief of Police, Mr. Schlittler, Chris Bacon. I'm analyst.
Good evening. Good evening. Hi, Joe. Welcome back.
Back again.
Ready, I'll take.
A little bit. There's a little sun today, so that's all right. Take.
All right, so tell us.
We'll just, I'll do a short, just kind of a brief overview and if you have questions, we'll go from there. Each year I have to make the print a little bigger, so the eyes are starting to go. The Needham Police Department is continuing to adapt to the changing environment in order to continue serving the needs of all of our community members. Currently, Needham Police Department has 46 sworn officers, and although we have budgeted 53, we hope to work towards full staffing using the new hiring process. One of the major undertakings from the past two years has been participation in completion of the Massachusetts Police Accreditation Standards. As of February 2025, the Needham Police Department is a fully accredited police department. Achieving accreditation is vital to every department, especially in today's policing environment, as it helps to ensure accountability, transparency, that can enhance confidence and trust in law enforcement among the communities we serve. Embarking on this process allowed us to look at the department's operation of providing police services. We're able to look at our organizational structure and staffing needs while looking at our operations functions and ensure we are following the best practices in public safety. In 2024, the town had 645 Group A offenses, which is down from 787 in 2023. While down in Group A offenses overall, there were increases in intimidation, burglary, larceny by false pretense, and stolen property offenses. Needham had 255 Group B offenses in 2024, which included traffic and bylaw violations. There were 77 total assault offenses committed in 69 cases in 2024. This is 15 less offenses than in 2023, where there were a total of 92 assault offenses committed. The Needham Police Department continues to track data relating to five different areas to capture more detailed data based on current issues and citizen concerns. These are areas of mental health, drug overdoses, handcuffing, domestic violence, and use of force. In 2024, there were 209 calls that were deemed mental health-related, and our clinician had 444 co-response interactions. There were eight total overdoses. Of the eight overdoses, two of them had Narcan administered by police. Six overdoses did not require the use of Narcan, and there were zero overdoses that led to death. Handcuffing is an inevitable, necessary part of policing. In 2024, there were 89 times that handcuffing was used. This number is one more than last year, which had 88 instances. Fifty-six of the 89, about 63% of those instances, were in 2024 for arrests. Break those down, the arrests for 56, warrant of apprehension 10, mental health issue 12, officer safety 5. In 2024, there were 87 domestic disturbances, domestic violence-related calls in Needham. This is two less than in 2023, when we responded to 89 domestic violence calls. There were 20 instances which force was used in 2024. This is up from seven use-of-force instances in 2023. In 2024, there were 20 times in which force was used during a call for service. In some calls, multiple types of force, or force used by multiple officers, were necessary to resolve the situation and maintain, maintain safety for our present. In two, in two calls, there were multiple subjects. Of those uses of force, hands-on controls, which were a lot of times if somebody's not complying, we would use hands control to bring them under control, to make sure we're in a, in a safe area for everybody involved. A lot of those happened at the hospital and unfortunately at the Walker School. We have to do, a lot of times have to take those, the kids that are either, you know, running away, taking off, we have to grab them to get them off the street and get them back to the facility, to their staff. So out of an abundance of cautions when we do that, we do list that as a use of force. In 2024, there were 4,843 motor vehicle stops. The percentage, the percentage is related to race and resident status remains stable, 82.4% of those stops were non-residents. And what I mean by that is a lot of the numbers were, were, you know, similar to what they were last year, would give a couple here and there, but those numbers seem, seemed to be stable over the past couple of years. There was a total of 56 arrests in Needham in 2024. I would note that we're up to 37 already this year. It's, it's been one of those years where, you know, if you go back, look over time, you have some of those outlier years where you might have a lot more, but it's just been extremely busy start to this year. The breakdown of arrests by race is shown in, in the table. 60.70 arrests, 34 were of white subjects, 13 arrests were of African-American, which equates to 23.2% of the total. There were four, 7.1% Hispanic individuals, and five, 8.9% Asian individuals arrested. There were 22 arrests involving BIPOC individuals. Nineteen of those 22 arrests were offenses in which arrests are mandated or a preferred response. Six of those arrests involved active arrest warrant. There were three arrests for operating under the influence. Five arrests involving domestic assault and battery, violation of restraining order. One arrest was from larceny from a building. One was for operating with a suspended license. One was for unlicensed operation attaching plates. Two involved larceny, breaking into a depository, receiving stolen property, and conspiracy stemming from one incident. There was one arrest involving the following charges: operating a motor vehicle with a license suspended, reckless operation of motor vehicle, failure to stop for police, receiving a stolen motor vehicle. And one arrest involved two counts of indecent assault and battery on a person over 14. One arrest involved operating a motor vehicle with suspended license, operating uninsured in possession of a Class D substance with intent to distribute. There were 34 arrests involving white individuals. 28 of those arrests involved offenses that were mandated arrest or a preferred response. There were 11 arrests involving arrest warrants. Nine of those arrests involved domestic assault and battery or violation of restraining order. There were six arrests involving operation of motor vehicle under the influence of drugs or alcohol. One arrest involved disorderly conduct. One arrest for unlicensed operation of motor vehicle. One for operating a motor vehicle with suspended license. And one was for operation of a motor vehicle with suspended license, possession of a Class B drug. There was one arrest for assault with a dangerous weapon, baseball bat, carrying a dangerous weapon, malicious destruction of property, and assault with a dangerous weapon. One arrest involved disorderly conduct, assault and battery on a police officer and resisting, resisting arrest. There was one assault and battery on a police officer and risk, arrests, resisting arrest, assault, and disorderly conduct. One arrest was for, involved conspiracy and receiving stolen property. We had 72 mental health incidents involving juveniles. The department's school resource officers continue to work with our clinician, community outreach, and collaborate with our school staff to provide assistance and resources for students in crisis. There were no juvenile arrests in 2024. There were six juveniles that had to appear at a hearing in juvenile court, and there were 10 juveniles that voluntarily entered our diversion program. The Needham Police Department had a total of 53,696 calls for service. This is an increase by 3,649 calls, or 7.3% from 2023. The number of calls Police, the Police Department handles each year is continuing to increase. In 2022, the department had 43,912 calls for service, just as a reference. Calls can be broken into priorities based on the level of urgency. The highest priority is Level 1, which calls burglar alarms, fires, motor vehicle crashes with injuries and sudden deaths. The number of Priority 1 calls went up in 2024 by 76, or 1.9%. Priority 2 includes calls for suspicious activity, fraud, larceny, and well-being checks. The number of Priority 2 calls increased from 2,722 to 2,811, which is a 3.3 increase. Priority 3 is the lowest priority level and encompasses the majority of our everyday calls. This includes security checks, animal calls, public assistance, motor vehicle stops, and administrative calls. The number of Priority 3 calls saw an 8% increase from 23 to 24. There were 482 motor vehicle accidents reported in 2024. The number of motor vehicle accidents increased by 32 from the total of 450 accidents in 2023. 482 is slightly higher than our pre-pandemic accident totals and is the highest number we've seen in many years. In 2016 through 19, the town of Needham is averaging roughly 457 accidents per year. 2024, 325 crashes occurred in an area with no traffic controls. 79 accidents occurred where there was a traffic light. 65 occurred where there was a stop sign. And 13 occurred when there was another type of control, yield sign, railroad signals, warning signs, et cetera. October has been the highest number of crashes at 53, and July and August has the lowest of 30. The overall average number of crashes per month in 2024 was 40, which is higher than 2022 and 2023. Based on this year's data, the most common days for motor vehicle accidents were Tuesday, with 84 accidents throughout the year. The day with the least accidents was Sunday, with a total of 32. Most accidents occur between 7:00 AM and 7:00 PM, with the highest numbers occurring between 12:00 and 1:00, with a total of 52 accidents. The number of accidents dropped significantly overnight, with 24 occurring between 11:00 PM and 7:00 AM. This is 14 more overnight accidents than last year, comparing the days of the week and time. Most accidents occurred on Mondays during the 2:00 PM hour, with a total of 12 accidents. 60 accidents involved injuries. And so that's kind of a brief overview of the stats we have, and then the report goes on to breaking down our, you know, different departments within the department and, and the work that they do.
Yeah, I had, I had something in it helpful as a picture of, you know, what you are facing and what we are facing as a community. I noticed on page nine in our report on counterfeiting and forgery, that many of these charges are still mailbox, mailbox fishing. So do you still recommend that if people have checks at their mailing, that they walk them into the post office?
Yes. Yeah, although they have, they have slowed down. It really just takes one night to really change those numbers back. So we are, it seems that the activities are picking up, the car breaks are picking up. Stolen car last night with some car breaks, so it seems to be getting back into that pattern. So yes, that's something we'd definitely recommend.
There was a recent arrest in a different town. I can't remember the town, for a mailbox special.
I'm not sure.
Yeah. Oh, you done?
I, I had a few other questions if you don't mind. I also noticed no overdose, overdose deaths this year. Would you attribute this to more use of Narcan or is there any?
I, I think it's, it's, it's probably twofold. I think the work that the police department, the department of health, the schools, the town in general are doing is getting the awareness out there, making sure that Narcan's available, they're aware of that. And the way that the town collaborates with each other departments helps in that. That year where we had, there was a, I think there was twenty-four, that was being seen everywhere. So that means, you know, we take it and from the reports we got was that there was a, a batch of heroin or fentanyl that came in that was extremely strong. And that was the impact that was not just facing us, but it was every other town. And so those are probably the two reasons that we're seeing a little bit of offset in that.
That's good news. In any case, good news. And then just on page fourteen in domestic violence, I noticed there were, you know, times where you mentioned the victim declines obtaining an emergency protection order at the time of the incident. And I know that's a very delicate moment and, and, you know, there's reasons why the victims may decline, but it, do you guys have some sort of protocol that you follow there or is there a way that you try to encourage people to have those?
We do. Our community outreach team will follow up after domestics, domestic violence calls as, you know, as soon as the next day, depending on what night. If it happens on a weekend, they'll follow up in the, you know, the following week to try and help those people get resources, the victims get resources and kind of, you know, provide them with the information needed to get a restraining order about the process and, and the protections that, that does give. So yes, we, our offices are well versed in the process and we do follow up with our community outreach team.
They, they have brought people over the next day to, and assisted them with the process.
Yeah, okay. That's, that's good. And then the last thing I wanted to ask about, just in the, in sort of the traffic safety. I noticed here, this is page twenty-three, eighteen motor vehicle accidents involving pedestrians, ten took place at a crossing location, a crosswalk. Any, any comments on that? Is that getting worse? Is it the same? Is it?
I think it's actually getting a little bit better.
Getting better.
Knock on wood. It's, it seems that, you know, through enforcement and getting the word out there through social media, that the numbers seem to be down. But, you know, that could be just attributed to, to lack of people paying more attention. We're doing more enforcement, crosswalk enforcement with our, with our groups here. So maybe all that is what's playing part into that.
Couple, you mentioned the arrests so far this year have been higher than typical. Do you know what they're attributed to or general categories?
Pretty much, you know, the one thing is we do have, we are similar in, in, you know, the, the kind of categories that we deal with arrest wise. We had a couple, two OU IRS over the weekend, a domestic violence arrest as well. You know, we've had, you know, a lot of warrants, assault and batteries. We had a party call up and threaten to shoot one of our officers. And that party had several warrants. So we're able to work with another department to get that party. So it just seems that it's, there's an uptick in people being a little bit more aggressive and hostile, not just with us, but I think generally in society. So it seems that all areas that we deal with are ticking up.
And then my other question is with the community resource, Red Riverside. How, how do you use that and is there a person in that position right now?
So yes, we have our clinician that's been there for, for a couple of years. That's well embedded with our department. Our officers are very trusting of the clinician. And she, there is no issue with officers working with those, with the clinician on scene. They're very comfortable with it. It's something that's worked out. Emily's been a great fit. And it's, as you can see by the numbers, it's been really beneficial all across the board.
Thank you.
It looked like most of the incidents this year were within the tolerances of the behavior that we've seen in the past. I, I just wondered if there's anything that you would flag as something that, when you looked at all the numbers at the end of the year, you were like, huh? Just sort of surprised to in somewhere. Was there anything that struck you there?
No, I mean, I think, you know, there's two things, the theft, the, the larger scale theft, whether it be mailbox, the cars. And then domestic violence and assaultive behaviors are, seem to be up a little bit. And, you know, the thefts and those types of crimes kind of come and go depending on the year. Some years here, you don't get, you know, a lot of those crimes. And then other years, they're just focused in our area. So that's something that we see kind of that's sporadic in terms of numbers, but for the past year or so, those are the things that we've really seen us spike in.
And again, so this is the time of year for that, we would recommend to people that they lock their vehicles.
Yes, we post. I think we post on social media every week about that and how important it is because most of the times that if they see a locked car, they're going to move on. And don't leave your key fobs in the car because there are some signs with certain cars that they can tell that the key is in the car and it makes it easy for them to, to steal. So.
Great. Thank you very much and congratulations on the accreditation. I am impressed with the professionalism of the department, so.
Thank you.
Your office is great and I think the community feels that way, agrees with me. I think it's, it's well-run and community policing is the way to go. The issues of the resisting arrest, are the offices okay? Like what happened?
So a lot of times if you, if, you know, in some of these cases where they go to make an arrest, the, the people that they're arresting and are fighting back, they're resisting the officers' attempts to, to place an arrest, whether that be, you know, kicking, punching, you know, running, whatever. The offices have been okay. We've had a couple smaller, you know, injuries, but in general, they've been okay. But some of the people tend to be fighting a little bit more.
Okay, all right. And to echo Mary Ann's question, Kelsey, is there anything you see as you go through this data, like raises your eyebrow? It's like, I'm, I'm trying to divine a trend somehow that like October is the, is the most accidents, July is the safest.
Yeah, I mean, those, just the system pulls out. So we are able to, there's kind of interesting to put in there. I think the trends are what you would expect of, you know, rush hour, school getting out, things like that in regards to traffic. And then as the chief said, with the crimes we're seeing, it just comes and goes. We had catalytic converters one year and then that kind of went away. And then we had paving scans and that kind of went away. So it just is whatever the, the flavor of the week is, I guess.
Thank you. Yeah, I was just thinking that. Okay.
They're always evolving.
Yes.
The criminals are evolving, so.
I will say one thing that we have seen is, you know, with a lot of the car thefts, some of them are as young as fourteen, fifteen years old. And the, that approach to crime is there, some of them have been out on, you know, been released to their, their family from previous cases and the same thing. So, you know, I think everybody in our job is, you know, understands the idea of, of giving people second chances. But, you know, when you're doing the same thing over and over again with having no, you know, repercussions and you're driving at fourteen at a hundred miles an hour down Denham Ave or down Highland Ave to the highway and then doing a hundred and twenty on the highway at fourteen years old, something's going to have to be done because we won't chase them when it comes to that, but they're still going to take off. They could hit somebody. So it's one of the areas that we, you know, tend to be concerned with is the, the lack accountability and the lack of facing repercussions for their dangerous behavior.
Do you have anything else?
No, and just you, thank you for everything you do. This is, thank you as well.
My staff makes me look good. I'll tell you that.
Yeah, well, I will, I will echo Kevin. Congratulations on the accreditation. I know that's a huge lift for the entire department, so.
Thank you.
Well done and I hope it helps roll into every year, every oncoming year. I also would like to compliment your social media. Social media can be a prickly place.
Is that a couple bumps?
Yeah. And, and, but, but the police department's social media is like unfailingly timely and, and for the most part pleasant unless you're reporting on something that is not pleasant. But I know you, I will say you've helped me avoid some down trees and so on, so on. Much appreciated. I did have a couple of questions. One is that I understand that the traffic to the hospital has really increased this year and I, I know that you said you had over thirty-five hundred additional calls in 2024. I'm wondering, are you, can that be correlated or is that just a normal increase? Or are you seeing anything related to increased traffic to the hospital because of the Norwood closure?
I mean, I think we're, we're definitely responding to the hospital and that's where some of our use of force come because we have to help their staff restrain patients that, that come in that are having some, you know, that are in crisis and facing some mental health. Norwood was a big location that had a unit for mental health. So we're seeing that all coming to Needham and we're over there quite a bit, you know, and we're seeing the increase in force because of that. And we're just restraining them, to help them restraining. But when we do that, we do list it as a use of force, just to be, it's not technically required in a lot of use of force. We do it because it's transparent. We do it, put our hands on somebody, we want to do that.
Yeah, I, I guess I just, this comes to mind because you said that the increase in hands-on was from seven to twenty, which seems, that's a pretty big jump. So that helps to explain that.
Yeah, and I think it's in general, if we didn't have the, the couple of locations that we've seen an increase in, you know, then I think, you know, the numbers would be more relative than what they were last year. I look out my office and I see seven, eight to ten ambulances sitting in that parking lot. And if you've ever been in there, you can see that they're lined up in the hallways and their staff does the best they can. And the Walker School really does a lot of great work too. But they just, they, they have issues with staffing and, and we're there to help.
And then, thank you. And then just one last thing. I think everyone in our community and everywhere else is really concerned about issues of immigration that we see in the news now every day. And so I'm just wondering for the, for the knowledge of our community, if you could just kind of restate what the Needham Police's position on that is.
Sure. I mean, I think it's, it's important that, you know, one of the first things we say is that we can't enforce federal law. There's a decision in Massachusetts, it's Commonwealth versus Lund, that outlines what we can do regarding immigration, civil detainers and detaining somebody past the normal booking process if they've been arrested. We can't enforce those detainers. We can't enforce federal law. One of the things we do say is that if that immigration is in town, we want to, we want to make sure that we're aware and that we are there so that we can make sure that our residents are treated fairly and that we can provide resources as if needed. The biggest thing is having that connection with immigration so that they will call us and tell us that they're going to be here so that there's a coordinated effort to, to make sure that everyone's, you know, you know, safe. And the message, one of the messages we want to get out to, to our community is that we want people that are here, you know, that are undocumented, that they shouldn't fear coming to the police department to report a crime or if they've been a victim of something and fear that they're, we're going to enforce federal law. We want them to understand that they can come to us and file any type of complaint or if they're a victim to come to us and we'll, we'll help them out. That we're not looking to have them sent to, to immigration. We want to make it clear that they're, they're comfortable to come to us.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I want everyone to know that you are here for the benefit of the community.
Can I ask a follow-up on that? So I, I heard, I forget if it was from the governor or mayor Wu, that they had instances where they were not informed when federal officials came. Have, have you experienced that at all?
No. We've, we've had a very good relationship with our federal law enforcement partners. And, you know, a lot of times they work on task force. So if we deal with bank robberies, car thefts, narcotics, all these task force have members of the FBI, DEA, immigration, ATF. So we've always had a, an outstanding relationship with them and they feel comfortable calling us knowing that, you know, that we'll answer them and they understand that we want to be, we're not involved in the, in the process of enforcing that, but we, we want to be there just to make sure that our members are, are treated fairly.
Could I bring up maybe the chief wants to talk about, I think is a remarkable process of hiring after we switched to our own hiring process, both promotion and new hire? Do you want to just mention that?
Sure. The promotional process was something that was just, it was a breath of fresh air. So we had a test for, a written test for our sergeants and lieutenant on a Saturday. We had the assessment center on Wednesday and Thursday and we had a list by the next Saturday. And we promoted within two or three days of that. So that process was just fabulous.
That would have taken a very long time.
It would have taken six months to a year to get that promotion.
Yeah, maybe remind everybody of the, the list that you got before and how big the list was now.
So we were actually going through a process now. Again, we just had a process and it probably takes a couple of months. We had prior with civil service, I think we had five to six names on our list that had anything to do with, you know, Needham or, or surrounding communities. So this, we used Getbadge and we now had to choose from a hundred at least. And we, we narrowed it down to the thirty top scores. We're able to bring them in, give them the assessments. And by the end of that, in the background, we get it down to around ten people and we interview ten people and we're able to make a decision based on that. But the first time took a little bit longer because we were kind of navigating the system. But we're looking, we just started, we had an orientation today for new candidate hire. And we're hoping to have them in an academy by August. And that would have taken maybe a year, if not longer, depending if there was an active list. So the process has been, has been great. It's been beneficial. We're seeing high quality candidates as well, some with experience, some without, but it's been so far, so good.
That's great. Anything else?
Take your weight.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. See you too.
Thank you.
Okay. So our next order of business is nuclear disarmament resolution, citizen's petition with Joseph McCabe. Come on up. He's joined by Peter Metz.
Thank you.
Tell us all about it.
I'm Joe McCabe, town meeting member, precinct death.
Peter Metz, citizen, it's a citizen petition in precinct B.
Thank you. This article is basically meant as a follow-up action on an article adopted by the Needham Town Meeting in 2019. That article called upon our federal leaders to make nuclear disarmament the centerpiece of United States national. of United States national policy and national security policy and, uh, recommended implementing the National Back From The Brink of Nuclear War Platform. And that there are basically five components of this. First is actively pursuing a verifiable agreement among nuclear armed states to eliminate their nuclear arsenals. Second, renouncing the option of using nuclear weapons first. Third, ending the president's role, sole unchecked authority to launch a nuclear attack. Four, taking US nuclear weapons off hair trigger alert. And finally cancelling our plan to replace the entire United States arsenal with enhanced weapons. Now, the reason for returning to town meeting at this time is that there are now very specific requests that we can make of our state and federal elected officials. Uh, there are bills filed in the Massachusetts Senate and the United States House of Representatives, which called upon the United States to adopt the policy as policy, the proposals that were essentially described in the article passed by the May 2019 Needham Town Meeting. Now, Peter will speak of why the abolition of nuclear weapons has become even more crucial than it was even in 2019.
If it wasn't crucial enough in 2019, and it was, of course, it was, we were living in the very few people understand it, extraordinarily dangerous time. We could lose vast portions of civilization tomorrow if there's a nuclear war. The situation's gotten worse and you can, there are things you know about, which is that, um, Russia has threatened to use nuclear weapons and raised, therefore raised the whole level of, of acceptability of using nuclear weapons. It's not just that they're threatening to use it in one place. China has decided to increase its nuclear arsenal by 50%. There are countries across the world now who are saying, well, maybe we ought to have ours, South Korea, Indonesia, um, Poland, a few others. And there have been, and we are about to lose next February, the last remaining nuclear limitation agreement called the New Start Agreement between Russia and the United States. It will expire and there is no auto, there is no mechanism for an easy renewal and there's no discussion right now about an easy renewal. All of these have raised the tension, the level of, of sort of acceptability of threatening people with nuclear war. And the fact is that we have an arsenal across the world, um, that's sufficient to, um, to destroy vast portions of humanity. I'll just give you one example and doesn't involve the United States. This is why we need to eliminate nuclear weapons across all nine countries. If India and Pakistan go to nuclear war halfway around the world, countries that are antist- and more than antagonistic with one another, if they go to nuclear war with their small arsenal, it's less than 2% of the world's total arsenal, 250 medium-sized nuclear weapons, the after effects, the effects in India and Pakistan are devastating and very immediately. Hundreds of millions of people die almost immediately. But the fires from the city, from, in the cities, in Indian and Pakistan cities creates so much smoke and soot, goes into the atmosphere, girdles the earth and over the next two years will block enough sunlight that you can't grow things in many, many portions of the world. And the estimate is, India and Pakistan, nuclear war, the estimate is across the world, 2 billion people will starve to death. This is not radiation, this is not blast, this is not fire, this is starvation. 130 million of those folks are estimated to be in the United States. It's just, we have to move against this, okay? And it's done, there are lots of reasons why folks think that we have to have our nuclear weapons. We do as long as the other nations do. We need to, as the, as a measure we're endorsing, as the, um, as we're asking our, um, federal and state legislators, endorse some measures that say, get on the stick and start negotiating our way out of this dilemma before it takes us all up.
What are the pieces, what are the numbers for the legislation?
Um, in the, in the Massachusetts Senate, it's S 1649. And in the US House, it's H Res 317. Those are not in the current printed version you have. We had to put placeholders in when we drafted this because those bill numbers were not known and so we'll have to move an amendment on the floor at the time of the town meeting to correct those.
Just a few other things. Nuclear weapons are now by international law illegal. The UN treaty on the prevention, on the prohibition of nuclear weapons entered into force in January of 2021, when enough, uh, countries that had approved it actually signed it. None of the nuclear powers have signed on. And in fact, they're not going to be able to sign on until they start some negotiations. That's part of the treaty. Also, I just mentioned that the Union of Concerned Scientists has been keeping, ever since the, I think, early 1950s, what's called the Doomsday Clock. And the clock moved a few months ago from 30 to 29 seconds to midnight. So, uh, that's, so it's another indication of why this problem isn't going away and why we need to be persistent in pursuing efforts to do this. Now, we're actually going to request, recommend actually, that the article, that you recommend that the article be adopted in the, in town meeting. The 2019 town meeting adopted, um, that article on a voice vote. Uh, and the Back From The Brink Platform has then since been adopted by many more municipalities, including the three largest cities in Massachusetts. The major objection to the article in the discussions in 2019, and I believe with the select board, was that it dealt with national affairs and that town meeting ought to deal with strictly local affairs. However, the use of nuclear weapons would definitely have local impacts. There is a precedent for local governments, including the government of Needham, taking a stand on such sorts of issues, including in the early 1980s, the town of Needham supported the nuclear freeze movement. And that movement was instrumental in ending the nuclear arms race and significantly bringing about a significant reduction of the world's supply of nuclear weapons. So basically what I'm saying is that, um, this article isn't, isn't new. It isn't something that, that a previous town meeting had not seen and had not weighed in on. No one spoke to the idea that we shouldn't work toward nuclear disarmament as a principle. No one in, in the meeting spoke to that, that idea. So really, what we're doing is taking what the spirit of the meeting was in 2019. And now, at that point, we didn't have any specific things that we could recommend. It was a sort of vague, um, recommendation that we communicate our wishes to our state and federal officials. And I know that Peter and I have talked over the years since then, this seemed to go into the air and we're not sure what happened with it. So since then, there have been, not just in these sessions, but in previous sessions, uh, bills put forward, that the, um, bill that's put forward by the, in the US House of Representatives, it's been put forward by Representative McGovern of Massachusetts, the area around Worcester. And, um, uh, the, um, article in the, in the state senate, the, is put forward by Senator Joe Comaford from Western Massachusetts. So these are very specific things that we can urge our representatives to do.
Comments, questions?
I have a question. It's kind of philosophical. So I, I understand the statement of values, like I, I completely on board with that, that's what town meetings should do. I don't understand the impact because, I mean, maybe it's not a question for you, maybe it's more a question for our state and federal representatives, like, what are they going to do with this? Is that going to influence what they do at all? And I think about the other non-binding resolutions that we've passed, like, like Bring Back, Back From The Brink and, and the opposition to Citizens United, and in my estimation, they've had zero impact.
So, um, it's my concept of democracy, um, that the constitution starts from the people. And if the people are able to express in strong enough ways, then something will happen. But if the people's wishes are expressed and then they just sort of float into the air, uh, then nothing happens. So, no, I, I, I can't say for certain that this particular thing is going to have an impact. If, I would have real questions to think that this, that the federal legislation would pass in this session, okay?
No.
But, you know, unless we do something, unless something is done about this, we're all going to be toast. So I think it is very important that we keep doing it. I, I, I think it's a philosophical argument that, that to stand, to sit and do nothing in this situation is, uh, at least in my mind, not acceptable.
I saw a quote today that said, um, you know, that so many things that we do right now, uh, are sort of ineffectual. And the question was, why do you continue to do them? Whether that's going to protest or writing letters or whatever, making calls to senators who don't listen to us. And the, the quote was, um, "I don't do this to protect them, I do it to protect me, like my sense of humanity, you know, to, to be true kind of to myself." And I wonder if this may be, I mean, I would have high hopes, you know, but I agree with you, I think probably it comes to not at least immediately, but it doesn't necessarily mean it's not worth doing the exercise.
I don't think it's correct. You, let me put it this way, what you're saying is correct, but think of it another way. When we passed the Back From The Brink Resolution six years ago, we were in a minority. Now there are 20 cities in Mass- Massachusetts, they are seeing, this is growing. How long will it take before we're finally able to persuade the leaders of those nine nuclear nations, the men, male leaders of those nine nuclear nations, to start paying attention to the cries of the people? We have a lot of work to do, a lot of work to do. But as they say, Rome wasn't built in a day and everything has to start with one brick on, on the other and we've been piling the bricks up over the last six years, but we've got a long way to go. But we cannot stop now because we're discouraged. We absolutely miss, I mean, humanity is at risk.
Do you have colleagues have any other comments?
I'd almost plead with you, please recognize that humanity is at risk, raise the voice of the town of Needham, humanity is at risk.
So what does H, uh, 317 say? This is from Jim McGovern, he's filed this and it is to, so we're asking him to? Right, so he has filed H Res 317. Uh, he filed a similar but not matching resolution last turn, session. It essentially lists pretty close language, the five points that I raised in the Back From The Brink Platform. In addition to that, he's added on some things to this year, which, um, I think are useful. I'll, I'll mention them. So six, following the five I enumerated, um, maintaining the de facto global moratorium on nuclear explosive testing. There's no requirement about this, you know? This is a de facto moratorium. Protecting, seventh, protecting communities and workers affected by nuclear weapons by fully remediating the deadly legacy of environmental contamination from past and current nuclear weapons testing, development, production, storage and maintenance activity. And goes on. On a much smaller scale, these weapons and their production has caused a lot of harm. I know that, um, people of my age were fairly highly irradiated back in the 50s. There is, um, proof of that in teeth that have been saved from St. Louis. It's really quite amazing. Anyway, um, but also people who've been involved in uranium mining and in, uh, nuclear testing over the years have, um, I mean, don't even talk to me about the South Sea islanders who are exposed to radiation through the testing and some of them can never go back home. And finally, actively planning a just economic transition for the civilian and military workforce involved in the development, testing, production, management and dismantlement of nuclear weapons. There's a lot of people, including in Massachusetts, who are gainfully employed in, in this industry and there's other things they could be doing that could actually be more beneficial to humanity, but McGovern put that, that in also.
But this is basically asking Jake Artest to endorse it.
Exactly.
Okay, so that's what this citizens petition is, an Abba State Rep who endorses, that's the ask.
A representative and our state senator.
All right.
So I do worry, right, that it's not going very far. I do wonder if a more focused effort on something might yield better results. Um, you know, trying to get the start talks back, get somebody to the table, right? Process that probably should have started a while ago, but it doesn't feel like anybody's working on it. The other thing that I think that certainly within our control would be the fact that we have a single person who controls the decision to launch in the United States. It would seem that that could be something that could be ameliorated. So I guess I worry that, um, this has such a broad ask that it's easy for people to walk away and maybe more specific ask might actually be able to yield some action that's at least beneficial to Americans in some sense.
That is a very good point and there have been bills that have been filed to address areas such as the, uh, so, you know, that, that, and in response to that, I'm not thrilled about this, in response to that, I would say, you know, if the discussion could get anywhere and this out, that would be an advantage. We think about, uh, think about the state senate last year and the climate bills and how they ended the, they got to the end of their official, basically it happened, and finally they pulled together a sort of climate bill that got passed a sort of in special section, session fairly soon before the end of the session. It didn't include a lot of things, but it did include some things. And so Massachusetts- And so Massachusetts is moving forward in some areas in the climate, not as much as we might have liked.
Gentlemen, thank you so much for this thoughtful presentation.
Can't you be doing something? We're asking ourselves that all the time, because this is going to be done in increments. It's, and so far, the answer is, this is the right thing to do. The sole authority of the president is part of this bill. New starts not explicitly part of it, but that will be the logical first thing to do under the part of the bill that calls for negotiations amongst the non-nuclear powers. You start with two, renew the old agreement amongst two, and try to go from there. So I think both of those will be addressed, and are certainly within the scope of it. You know, the only thing we have to do is, if we're united with, with cities and states all across the country, and it's better that we all call for the same thing than each of us call for our own favorite thing, we're more likely to get success that way. So this is, this is one, this is the, the nuclear weapons measure in the Congress. And all we're asking, by the way, in the, in the, in the Massachusetts legislature, is that Massachusetts speak up in favor of what's, we want to have [inaudible] in the Congress. Just like we're asking, mm, just to end the Congress. So it's better that we have a united voice, and then, as you get closer and people start, if the powers that be start paying attention, then we, then, then you can get to the discussion of how do we start.
I think the challenge is going to be if we sit here next year, right, and there are an additional 20 or 25 countries that are working on a nuclear weapon in light of what's transpired in Europe, that we have a different issue. And then I hope that we will go on, and I know it's first use, rather than some approach, but, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Oh, may I ask, Madam Chairman? We asked if you, if the select board would make a recommendation to the [inaudible]. When will you decide?
At least tonight, and those that we aren't at our next meeting.
Okay. Should I contact Michael Thee directly at this point about, about the addendum?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
So next, we have the revolving fund warrant article with Hank Haft, our Director of Building Design and Construction. Hi, Hank. And Gabby Queenan, our Sustainability Manager.
Hi.
So I can just provide a little bit of background. So the proposed article would establish an energy efficiency and clean energy capital program revolving fund. So the objective of the revolving fund is to allow the town to use funds from three types of programs, state, federal, and utility programs that are being received for completing qualifying energy efficiency and clean energy capital projects towards future clean energy and energy efficiency capital projects. The town is able to establish this revolving fund pursuant to Massachusetts General Lodge, Chapter 44, Section 53 E and a half. The types of projects that could be funded through this new revolving fund would include clean energy, energy efficiency, and electrification projects. So for example, solar PV, ground source heat pumps, those types of projects. There is a two-step process that is required for this revolving fund, so if adopted, the language would have to be reviewed by the Attorney General's Office, and then, once that is approved, an annual spending limit would be established. So this would be effective July 1, 2026, for fiscal year '27. There have been an increasing number of municipalities that are interested in this type of revolving fund, in large part because of the establishment of clean energy tax credits, also known as direct pay or elective pay, which enables governments and nonprofits to be able to apply for tax credits for projects like electric vehicle purchases, solar PV, and ground source heat pumps as well. So that's, that's just a little bit of context for why this article is before you. I will just note, as you know, with the adoption of the Climate Action Roadmap, opting into the Specialized Energy Code, and several large capital projects coming down the line that are going to require electrification, having a fund like this would enable the town to be in a position to act strategically on some of those large energy efficiency, clean energy, and electrification projects. Happy to take any questions.
Listen, I believe Gabby put together a very good FAQ, I believe you have received that, which answered questions that had been bubbling up from other committees. And we can review those if it's helpful, but I don't want to reiterate them.
I guess I'm wondering, I know we haven't been taking advantage of these programs for very long, like, but given our experience so far, how much money do you think we're talking about ending up in this fund? What kind of numbers are we talking about?
Like, the most, I'll go back through the recent projects. So at Emory Grover, the total ever-source rebate is projected to be $123,857. We have received the first $92,000 of that, once the, the project was completed. And after one year, we anticipate, assuming we run successfully, we anticipate a balance of $31,500. On the public safety complex, because we, we were largely working with natural gas heating there, it was a much lower amount, $21,500. Sunita Williams, we, we received about, almost $79,000. All of these have gone back into the general fund.
Okay. So without this revolving fund, that's where it goes, into the general fund and gets applied without relationship to an energy efficiency project?
Correct. And the, the smart payments that the town continues to receive for Sunita Williams also goes back into either general fund, or I guess it helps pay for electricity in the school.
So the, the other types of revolving funds we have are for particular programs, like the pool revolving funds, you know, those are fees for the pool memberships can be used for pool maintenance or things related to the pool. This seems much broader. So, you know, funds that would come in related to Emory Grover could be spent on something, you know, a very different part of town, you know, a different building. And, like, I, I could understand, you know, wanting to use energy rebates for other energy product, projects, but I think you can also say, maybe, you know, an energy rebate associated with Emory Grover could be used for maintenance of Emory Grover. You know, something, you know, a rebate associated with public safety building could be used for public safety. So I kind of feel like it's, it's very broad, and there's, by putting it into the general fund, maybe that's actually, I mean, that allows us more flexibility to choose where it goes.
Yeah, I mean, I, I won't disagree with that. That's certainly an option to limit to, to the building. I suppose the, the concern I would have with that is, there may be instances where we recognize that we have an ability to do a project in another building that would be more financially advantageous. So for example, when we do a roof replacement, if we are able to then apply solar to that building, that might be an advantage for us to pursue that. And those projects do generate additional tax credits, but we're only going to do so many solar projects at one location.
Can I ask you to talk about matching funds as well, with regard to having these funds available in a revolving fund? It's my understanding that some of these grants require an upfront contribution, but that the return on investment is, you know, one to four, or more.
Sure. So several of the programs that are grant-related do require matching funds. These types of projects, I will say, are far more likely to have grants and associated matching funds. So for example, solar PV, at this time, there's only one program that Needham is eligible for that would allow us to pursue the installation of solar PV, and that one does have a 10% match requirement. But I would say, like, this is, these funds I would see as being, like, separate and distinct from, from those matching.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
I guess I would have said, kind of to Josh's question, I, I think this is really a natural example of how a revolving fund should work. The idea that it can be designed in such a way to contribute to this energy fund and sort of pay it forward is something that we know at this point is badly needed for town infrastructure across the town. So the way that those funds can be, you know, captured and reused, there is zero doubt that it's going to be reused in such a way, and we'll evaluate it to benefit the town so as to reduce costs. And I, I just think this is a terrific way to at least organize and track that progress as we go forward.
Maybe, maybe for me, or maybe for other people who are not as familiar with this stuff, can you, in simple terms, tell me what we will be able to do with this revolving fund that we cannot do without it?
So it's, I guess it's not saying that the town would be able to do different types of projects. It's enabling us to know that we have dedicated funding for future projects, so we can do advanced planning for those projects. So it's, I guess it's a, it's enabling our efficiency versus doing a different type of project.
Yeah. And, and moving forward, the projection for the addition to the Jack Cogswell Building, for instance, the, since that will be a ground source heat pump, heated and cooled building, the incentives, or I should say, the grants opportunity there are substantially larger. Potentially with ever-source, we're looking at $290,000. And if, assuming the direct pay from the IRA is still functioning, it's potentially $621,000.
In rebates?
Yeah.
So just to bring it back to this, how does the revolving fund help us to go after that?
So, so we would, so like-
Or help us to use the money afterwards, or something? Like, how does it relate?
So the, the, so like, in this case with the Cogswell Building, the town would still go through its, like, typical process for funding that project, but then, upon project completion, we would apply for those tax credits. And with the federal government, it's 45 days to a year or more for getting those, those funds back to the town. But then those would be allocated to this fund. So if, for example, we wanted to use those funds to do another ground source heat pump project, for example, at the Pollard, or for air source heat pump, or solar PV, we would be able to utilize those funds for that next project. So if, if this revolving fund wasn't established, the town would still be able to apply for those credits. It's just a question of whether it goes to the general fund or to the revolving fund.
And, and it's also cash flow. The cash flow on these grants typically come at the conclusion of a project and sometimes a year after the project.
Why don't you sell it at the state attorney's office downstairs?
Excuse me. So while it would be possible, for instance, if we can't afford to put solar PV on the rooftop of the addition to the Jack Cogswell Building, those grant funds could potentially be used to have a parallel project to, to put solar panels on both the existing roof and the new roof. Or it could be allocated toward the, toward elements of the Pollard project.
Do you have, do, do you anticipate having a, like, a cap on the amount held in the revolving fund, with the leftover going to the general fund? Or everything, everything rebate-y goes into the revolving fund?
So the statute requires that there be, at an annual town meeting, a spending limit. So that's the spending.
So, right, for spending, but we don't cap what goes into the fund?
Dave, do you want to, it rolls out, right? And Dave, would you mind talking about the specific, I, I think we're completing the Cogswell project with this stabilization fund, which I think we're thinking for more smaller things.
Correct. The revolving fund works that proceeds associated with the program go in there. There's no cap in terms of how much money goes into it. What town meeting controls is how much may be expended in any one fiscal year. That's why town meeting has an annual vote of setting the ceiling of the spending. And town meeting, the amount can be amended from year to year. Often, we establish spending limits that will cover the intended expenses. We only need to amend those revolving fund dollar budgets from time to time. The, the vision was more of the, on the smaller side projects. For instance, some of the things that the director was referring to for the Jack Cogswell Building is, in spirit, up to some of the questions that were asked by the board, that article would allow for the expenditure of rebates for the purpose of energy improvements at, at the Jack Cogswell Building, should town meeting approve that project. And so it's earmarked to be invested in the same facility that generated the proceeds.
And Dave, if we get to the point where we have no more energy projects, we can close down the revolving fund?
Yes. Any revolving fund can be closed at, at the end of the fiscal year, and the monies would return to the general fund.
And we could do that, like, town meeting could move, I mean, in some of these numbers that you're saying, that's like real money. So if we found that we had a different use, can we move money out of the revolving and into the general fund by an appropriation from town meeting? Or what are our options?
The fund can be dissolved. Monies can be released to the general fund if it's determined that the intended purpose is no longer viable.
Okay. But if the balance just gets very high, that's not really the same thing?
Correct. It's not the same thing. But I am not envisioning it's going to be at the level that you're hearing. All those large amounts have already gone to the general fund. The town does receive energy credits, energy rebates. Every year, we buy energy efficient appliances for the operating school lunch program, for instance. There's energy rebates. Those are the sort of monies that I would be envisioning going in there. It's, and energy efficiency rebates associated with construction of a new project would best be stated in the warrant article for town meeting to vote on, and also know that those monies are being reinvested into that facility.
Such as for the Pollard project that, that-
Similar language would be in the Pollard project, correct.
They would be reserved for that building itself.
Correct.
I just want to add to Kathy's question. So like, what would change? I, I think, like we said, receiving might, wouldn't change how we receive money, but a revolving fund doesn't require town meeting appropriation, so it would speed up, essentially speed up the process for, for expending money. I think there are two reasons why, I guess, I still prefer putting, keeping it in the general fund the way it is. One is, because I, I mean, I kind of like having town meeting approve it. But the second one is- But the second one is, you know, the financial climate is really uncertain, and we may be in a position where we want to have that money in free cash to appropriate to other uses. So that flexibility is kind of important.
But I think if it's big dollars, right, you have that flexibility upfront in the warrant article to determine if it's not going into this, if it's big dollars, right? That's what I understood?
Why?
If you were building for a project and you knew you were going to have these credits coming, you could designate in the funding article that those credits, in fact, shall be held and maintained for that particular project, or for the maintenance of that project. So you could craft an article that designates the bigger dollars if you wish them to go to maintain a project. I mean, I think, as Dave said, the intent was that it was covering more of the garden variety, things that are coming in, that bigger projects might be designated in another way.
That's certainly my initial understanding of it.
I guess I don't understand that mechanism. So you're saying at the beginning, when a project is proposed?
Is funded.
Is funded by Town Meeting.
When the funding article comes to Town Meeting.
And in that article, we say any rebates have to go towards energy efficiency upgrades at this site.
Actually, it's in your article.
It's actually, it appears in your warrant.
Under Article 33 now.
Yep.
That we're proposing that by this vote, the town manager is authorized to apply for accept and expend federal state aid, including energy efficiencies, to be expended into, for the facility. So that the, what communities have seen is that they've built a facility, they want to put the solar PV on, they could get $900,000 from the federal government if it comes two years later. So then they get the money, then they put the PV on it. That's what happened in Westwood.
Yeah, exactly.
So that, so that's not related to the revolving fund? And that's just.
No, but it's built into the article for funding the construction. That's what they're saying, yeah.
It's a separate way of doing the similar.
So, yeah, so we could, we could do it that way, like Article 33, without having a revolving fund.
And then at the end of any project, if there's funding left over unexpended, then it goes back and gets.
I think Dave is making a distinction. So you could, if you want to keep big-ticket items like Cogswell or Pollard within the project, that's one thing. You're going to anticipate a higher rebate from all the stuff that's going because it's new construction. But the revolving fund would have all the other little bits and pieces that come in from buying a new dishwasher, that's a heat pump dishwasher, or buying an, you know, redoing the chillers, or maybe that's, maybe that's too big, but.
Madam Chair, the Finance Committee actually asked if I could get a history of how much has been collected in those types of rebates. And I'll have that information in time for your next meeting. So that may be helpful, so you can visualize the tougher dollars that we're talking about.
I guess I also see that it gives us, in some ways, more flexibility, right? It gives you the ability to designate upfront if that's what you choose. It could give you the ability to designate that it goes to the revolving fund because you know you have another project that you actually do want to save those dollars for. So it lets you think about, do you want to leverage the ability to contain them so you can pay them forward for this, a similar-ish purpose, right? Or do you want to do something different? You now have two options, rather than just going to general fund and then trying to re-pull them back for this purpose.
So can I just ask a question? What happens here for the Cogswell Building if the rebates are kept within the project? And then what if everything's covered? What happens to the, I mean, excess funds?
Like anything, it would, it would close out the.
So even if they're rebates?
Even if they're rebates, it would close out, and that would go to the general fund and become free cash.
All right. Do you guys have any questions?
Yes.
Anyone else? Good. Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. So now we have the town manager's report, or position on warrant articles and scheduling and.
First one is the, to go through the annual and the special. Just lost it. New binder. Everybody's binder has the status arc. If you rip it out, you, like, hey, you would have lost it.
Oh, we have that.
Is it in our binder?
Yes.
Love that sheet.
So the first item for the board's consideration is Article 3, establish elected efficiency hours. Is essentially the stipends for the select board and the salary for the town clerk. And this is the amount recommended by the Human Resources Advisory.
It's going to be the positions chart. That's what I was looking for.
Madam Chair, I recommend that the select board recommend adoption of Article 3.
Do we say support? Not support, right?
Recommended. It doesn't.
Excellent. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay.
Madam Chair, we prefer, ask the board to defer action on Articles 4 and 5. They're likely to be withdrawn, but we may have further conversation next week. Come to Article 6, which is an appropriation for what's typically a five-year cycle for classification and compensation. This one was actually funded for FY18 and in FY17, in, at the 2017 Annual Time Meeting. Because of the COVID pandemic, this got delayed. So we're trying to get back on track. This is typically a five-year cycle.
I'd move that the select board adopt recommended adoption of Article 6.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Excellent.
Article 7 is our annual property tax assistance program appropriation, the amount of $50,000.
I'd recommend the select board adopt Article 7, or recommend adoption of Article 7.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Article 8 is our annual appropriation for public facilities maintenance.
I recommend the select board recommend adoption of Article 8.
Second.
Any discussion?
I'm, I'm just going to interrupt for a second, just for members of the public who are watching us do this. Part of the reason the select board does this relatively quickly without a lot of discussion is we've been working on these all year long, so we're familiar with these articles when they come forward. So I'm just going to say it's not that we're dismissive of these articles, it's that we know what they are, and therefore we can.
Many have appeared in prior years, too.
Yes.
And we've had a chance to discuss in the, in previous meetings, so, yes.
Coming into the vote.
Very good point. Thank you. Do we have a second?
I thought we did.
Yeah.
Did we? Oh, great. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay.
Article 9 is a request for forestry management program. As another example, that virtually all of these were included in the annual budget that we presented. So we've been, really been talking about these, like you said, since last summer. The forestry management program would do three things. It will help us develop a tree inventor, comprehensive tree inventory, enhance our tree planting program, and help us do some healthy forest management of diseased and dead trees. We have been talking about whether the town could qualify for an urban forestry grant, which those come due, I think, in the fall, I think in the fall. So, you know, we'll certainly apply, and then if there's either more work that can be done, or there can be a turnback of this appropriation based on that grant, we will certainly take a look.
Madam Chair, I move that the board vote to support Article 9.
Second. Any discussion?
This was one of the articles I had questions on, but it, my questions were answered.
Excellent. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
So under Article 10 is, we're going to have to do a great job of making sure that the, the climate and energy articles in the two different warrants are clear and distinct. But under Article 10, we're seeking $250,000. It was originally $500,000, but at the recommendation of the Finance Committee, we lowered the amount, as we had told the board in, in January. And this would be used to fund the matching grant opportunities. And it is, it is a little confusing.
Yes.
As we like to say, in a city form of government, there's always another meeting where the legislative body can appropriate, but we have to wait, you know, we have one shot in May, one shot in October. So the, the intent here and the grants that they have been trying to find in the large-scale grants for the matching are related to stormwater, so we know that's a high priority. And the Finance Committee did recommend adoption of Article 10.
Okay. So for anyone keeping track, this is the article that I was referring to in our previous discussion about the revolving fund. All right, moving along. Any thoughts?
Madam Chair, I move that the board vote to support Article 10.
Second.
This is another article I had questions about. And, and there was one thing that, so I read through Gabby's memo, and there are a lot of grants, the stormwater is great, like, but there are a lot of grants that are so uncertain at the federal level, we just don't know. And kind of similar to the last conversation about kind of sequestering money, I, I wonder if it's possible to just say, you know, after a certain amount of time, you know, two years, three years, might any unencumbered money will return to the general fund? Because I just, in general, don't like the idea of having money just sitting out there that could be used for something else.
Can't imagine that we wouldn't spend it on stormwater within three years.
Well, if it's a matching.
It's a matching fund, yeah.
You know, I appreciate that thought. I think, I'll have to ask Dave if it's legal to have a self-expiring article, but the board is free to put this on an agenda every year and say, where's your, you know, in fact, the town manager's report comes out every May, and it says that we haven't spent it. And so I would imagine the board would do its due diligence, but I don't, Dave, have you ever heard of an article that expires? We could, we could do some research on that. How about that? But we certainly will report back to you annually.
So just to Josh's point, because I think the uncertainty is complete about whether any of these federal funds will appear, like, in a year, like, let's say, maybe even only in a year. Let's imagine in a year, and I don't want to imagine this, but let's imagine that we are in a situation where we are scrounging pennies and where we see no possibility for matching funds. In one year, can we vote to just take this money back?
You would, you would re-appropriate it at Town Meeting. You would bring it, sometimes we have a funding source that's another article.
Do that.
Of course.
Like, in a year from now, we could say, never mind.
And these are warrant articles for a reason, because we're going to, it's going to be two or three years, and it crosses fiscal year, so that's why it is here. So we don't expect, this time next year, we may not have spent it all, but you'll have a good sense this time next year, like, there's, spent nothing, maybe there's no.
Right. And I'm not saying this is likely, I'm just saying, you know, in kind of a.
Though it does seem.
Certain scenario.
Why is to have money on hand now to take advantage of any grants, lingering grants, before we have to start shaking out the couch?
No, absolutely. Just so long as, if we really can't use it.
Yeah.
That we could get it back. Because I think that's a fair assumption.
Yes. Okay. So with that, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Article 11?
Under Article 11, this is the article that we, another article that we have been talking a lot about, and for which we recently completed an FAQ with the schools, for just under $2 million for an enterprise-wide software that would eliminate the need to have separate and distinct standalone systems that, as you've heard over and over, aren't talking to each other well, and are resulting in a whole host of problems that, that you know well of. So we are recommending that this appropriation be supported, and that we can begin the process of converting the most difficult systems first and then moving forward. The Finance Committee did recommend adoption at its last meeting.
Discussion?
Could I request that I present this at Town Meeting?
You can certainly request. Let's discuss after.
Sounds good.
Any discussion for now, though?
I would move that the select board recommend adoption of Article 11.
Okay.
Second.
Excellent. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Article 12?
Under Article 12, we're requesting an appropriation from the opioid settlement stabilization fund. And the purpose here is that because of the timing of the fund, we were appropriating in October, and everybody wanted it sort of normalized back to May. And so this will support the now full-time behavioral health peer support specialist. And I think you heard from the chief, this is somebody who's in, in his, his team of people who is really helping and making a difference in the recovery community in Needham.
Madam Chair, I move that the board vote to support Article 12 in the annual Town Meeting warrant.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Article 13?
Under Article 13, we'd ask the board support the appropriation for the 2026 operating budget, probably following along the, the budget that the board supported when we presented it is very similar to the one that the Finance Committee adopted. They did make a few tweaks, and all that we would support.
Madam Chair, I move that the board vote to support Article 13.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Article 14?
Don't have anything to add.
On 14 or 15, the budgets that we presented to you.
Okay. So.
I move that the select board recommend adoption of Article 14.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And 15 is also the same?
Yes.
And I move that the select board recommend adoption of Article 15.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Article 16?
So Article 16 is what we were talking about earlier, which is where Town Meeting sets the spending limits for revolving funds. So if you were to adopt the revolving fund we were talking about earlier at the May 26 Annual Town Meeting, it would be, have a line in here, and it would have a spending limit. The change this year is to, for the aging services programs, from $75,000 to $100,000. As Dave was mentioning, these don't change very often, but there's more use of the programs at the Aging Service Division at the Center of the Heights, which is great, and would like to recommend increasing that amount.
Madam Chair, I move to the board vote to support Article 16.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Article 17?
Article 17 is Town Meeting authorization to expend Chapter 90 funds, so-called, which is, we recently sent the board a memo about sources and uses of Chapter 90. And, you know, unless circumstances change drastically, funding that we receive for FY26 is directed towards the Mark Tree Road total reconstruction and Central Avenue at Great Plains intersection improvements.
I move the select board recommend adoption of Article 17.
Second.
Yeah. I, so I, this is another one that I had questions about. I, I fully expect that there's going to be an amendment on this to carve out an exception for expending public ways on Great Plains app between Linden and Warren. That's the envision Needham. If we voted today, I actually would support that amendment. I think if there is much more outreach between now and Town Meeting, and there's an opportunity to engage businesses and perhaps even change the design, then, you know, I may vote differently at that time. But I just wanted to let everyone know that I think this is potentially a contentious article.
Okay. But this is allocation of the funds. Regardless of what they're spent on. You're just saying you want to direct them more?
So it says, you know, it's, it's accepting the funds. And yes, it would be silly not to accept the funds, but it also authorizes the alteration, repair, resurfacing upon all or portions of various townways. So I, I do expect that some people don't like how it's being used on some projects.
Although if, if I'm, I know it's not in the text of Article 17, but in the article information, as Kate was saying, it's going to be allocated for Mark Tree Road and Central Avenue at Great Plains, so not.
Not, not Great Plains. It's not the GPA improvement.
So in the chapter. So in the Chapter 90 memo that the town manager sent, $80,000 is allocated or proposed to be allocated for the pilot, in addition to $320,000 in a grant. And then there's also $874,200 in Chapter 90 money that has been encumbered to pay for the design of the Invision Needham downtown project, and that's all from Chapter 90.
And those funds have already been authorized by town meeting.
Correct. So it's really about the $80,000 for the implementation of the pilot moving forward.
That pilot is paid for with a grant.
I believe that's funded out of prior Chapter 90 authorizations.
Yeah, like amendment wouldn't... I mean, I hear what you're saying, and I get the point of your comment, but I'm not sure that amending this is kind of the best strategic way to hit, to make that happen. But either way, we still want to authorize the funds because we still want to have them to spend on something.
Accepting the funds is absolutely important.
So we have a motion for us to support this article. Any other discussion?
I would say if people are planning a motion to amend, it's very helpful to have that in advance to be reviewed by town council and the moderator.
Yeah.
Okay, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
And 19 together. And I would move that the select board recommend adoption of both articles.
Second.
And I continue to say that I look forward to town meeting adopting them by unanimous consent.
So that would be great.
Trying to manifest that.
Any discussion?
Yes, I would just reiterate that I don't support changing any sort of amendment.
Yeah, and that these are the same articles that town meeting approved in our first go round. Nothing has changed, everything's the same, base compliance articles and amount. Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Article 20.
These are the CPA articles. The CPA is recommending appropriation of $46,712 to assist the Needham History Center and Museum in its storage capacity.
What page?
61.
61.
Did I miss having CPA come in here? Did they come in while I was away?
They came in.
I don't even remember. I know I watched that.
You were someplace fancy.
Madam Chair, I move that the board vote to support Article 20.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Article 21.
You did also have not only the CPC presentation, but we had a presentation by Concom on the trail signage improvements, which the CPC is recommending.
Madam Chair, I move that the board vote to support Article 21.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Article 22.
Under Article 22, the CPC is recommending the appropriation of $2,840,223 for creation of new affordable housing up at the East Militia Heights former Army property. And this is a reduction from what the Child Service Center had requested.
I have a question. Are we expecting them to come in on this?
Didn't they already come in?
We...
The CPC came in.
The CPC came in. They are actually coming in about the project in May? In May, late May? The second meeting in May, the Child Service Center.
They're also coming into the Finance Committee.
They're coming to the Finance Committee.
Yeah, okay. I'm torn on this, actually. I think it's a fantastic project. I think it would be fantastic as a loan. I think because it's a private entity who has their own closed referral system, it's not open to the public, like most... Well, like the Needham Housing Authority, for instance, it is. I would love to see this as a loan, and I think that, I mean, the Affordable Housing Trust will have a conversation about that. It has the ability to loan, and, I mean, what would have to happen, excuse me, is that the CPC, this CPA money would have to be allocated to the Affordable Housing Trust, which would then be loaned to the organization. And I don't know if it can be amended on town meeting. But that would be the preferred mechanism that I would hope for.
I think that we have two and a half weeks, and I don't think it's possible for us to think through all the ramifications of what that might be.
That's a huge letter.
It's a CPC article, you can't amend it, I think.
They can.
They can?
Yeah. I mean, Madam Chair, since there will be presentation tomorrow night, and maybe people could watch, maybe we defer this till next week?
Yeah, I'm fine with that. I just... I want to clarify, though, I thought that members of the Needham community were eligible for some of this housing.
The non-autism units are open to the public.
Yeah, they are open to the public. So as subsidized housing.
And lottery system.
Yeah.
Like any 40B. Through our, through the town's lottery system. So just to be clear, it's like quasi-private.
It says essentially half and half.
With a few...
Does that change your...
A few for staff.
You can think about it.
It's open here next week, pretty helpful. Thank you.
Okay, so postponing Article 2 then. All right, so Article 23.
$3.2 million CPC is recommending for preservation at Seabeds Way, and as I'm sure the board is well aware, there's financing implications for getting this started so that the Section 9 Federal Public Housing Program can convert to the Section 8 program, and it will help the financing structure over at Linden Chambers.
And, oh.
And Kathy's way more of an expert on this than I am. Please, go ahead.
Just note that this number is way lower than what they were asking for. So they asked for $9 million. This is 3.2 million. And so it's doing two things, that it is redoing Seabeds Way, which really needs to be redone, and then it is unlocking, and I will not explain how because I'm not capable of it, it is unlocking an ability to move forward on Linden Street. So it has two major benefits, and I think with the number coming so far down, you know, they really worked on that. I want to note that.
Madam Chair, I'm very supportive of this. I think the remaining money that was going to be for Cooks that was taken out, I think they, we do anticipate that they will come back in next year or in a future year for that as well.
Yes. But I think the smaller bite at a time, you know, has some benefits.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I recommend adoption, the town meeting adopt Article 23.
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Article 24.
The CPC is recommending appropriation of $300,000 for the design of an action sports park and pickleball courts. The action sports park is proposed for the quarry area to the... I'm going to have to say to the left if you're looking at it. I don't know what the other direction it actually is.
Where the Christmas tree sales.
Of where the Christmas trees go. And the pickleball courts are over where, near where the tot lot had been previously, as requested by the Parkmaster Christian.
Madam Chair, I move that the select board vote to support Article 24.
Second.
Any discussion?
No, just a point. I think this will be another article that will just be contentious at town meeting, potentially. I'm in favor, I mean, like, I'm voting for it, but I know that neighbors are not, have concerns, that's all. Yeah.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Article 25.
CPC is recommending $69,960 for designing Elliott School grounds renovation project. It's been more than 20 years since the school opened, and the Elliott is in need of update.
But they'll keep the rock, right?
I cannot imagine that that rock will be moved.
Thank you.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I move that the board vote to support Article 25.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Article 26.
Under Article 26 is the CPA budget and reserves. I think the CPA did something a little different this year than it hasn't done before. In my recollection, is that instead of appropriating to the reserves, it's directly appropriating to items that qualify for the reserve. It's just a little bit of a change, and there were no open space projects, so the amount for the open space reserve is recommended. You recall historic, they're recommending the Needham History Center, but also is the debt service for Emory Grover and Town Hall? Yeah.
Is that just because there were projects on the table that needed funding immediately?
Cecilia is our resident expert.
So the CPC hasn't done appropriating future receipts in this volume before, in this amount, but they have done smaller volumes of the receipts, and it was solely because they wanted to fund every project possible, and this was the best way they could fund the most amount of the projects that were in front of them. And they know that they're getting more money next year, just in the annual CPC budget that comes around, and so they were more concerned about funding what was in front of them this year.
Is there a balance in the reserves that are not being added to this year?
Yeah. There is a balance in the historic reserves and the open space, but there will be no balance in the other two reserves.
Historic, housing, so there will be no balance in housing?
No.
Wow, okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Cecilia.
Did we already have a motion on this?
Nope.
Madam Chair, I move that the board vote to support Article 26 in the annual town meeting warrant.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Article 27.
Article 27 is the general fund cash capital, which is the capital budget for FY26 that the board adopted. There's no difference from that which the board adopted in December of '24.
Madam Chair, I move that the board vote to support Article 27.
Second. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Article 28.
Last year, the town meeting voted for design for the Elliott School boiler replacement, which will replace older boilers with high-efficiency condensing boilers. And this is also included in the capital plan the board adopted.
Madam Chair, I recommend the town meeting adopt Article 28.
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Article 29.
Article 29 will enable the construction of the renovation of the young adult area at the library that was subject to feasibility and then last year's design.
Madam Chair, I move that the board vote to support Article 29.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Article 30.
Article 30 is an appropriation of $1,040,000 for the high school stair repairs. The high school stairs, or the grand stairs you see from Highland Avenue, they weren't updated in any of the various high school projects and are in a state of enough disrepair that we believe, we will ask the board to recommend adoption of this, including an emergency preamble, so we can get the work done over the summer and ensure that we have the egress that we need to keep it safe.
Madam Chair, I move that the board vote to support Article 30.
The emergency preamble.
And the emergency preamble.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Article 31.
Article 31. So just a reminder that when we had the capital discussion last fall, we talked about moving forward the projects that were really already under design and pausing for this year future decisions on future projects. And so the, we did defer a number of items in the design category because we just don't know what's going to be happening. But the Newman School theatrical lighting, sound, and rigging repairs project was designed, and at a previous meeting, the board agreed to amend the prior article language that called for debt in order to fund it through free cash because we had sufficient free cash to do so.
Madam Chair, I move that the board vote to support Article 31.
Second. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Article 32.
Article 32 is moving forward from the feasibility study. Three components of projects for renovations at the Center at the Heights. The first is to modify the rear entrance to make it accessible. The second is to essentially expand the very well and heavily-used fitness center by swapping the billiard room and the fitness center, and to update and expand the kitchen to allow for commercial kitchen capability at the Center at the Heights.
Madam Chair, I move that the board vote to support Article 32.
Second. Discussion?
Just have a question. We're designing for all three redesigns. It, that doesn't commit us to constructing all three, right? So I'm thinking about the kitchen in particular. We had a need for it because of the traveling meals program being a risk, but now that it's no longer a risk, and it's good to have a design in case we want to in the future, but do you envision that the construction...
Certainly, the request of the Council on Aging is that all of these three projects be done at the same time. I don't think designing, I mean, designs do go stale, so, but I think you certainly will have the option to make that decision in next year. But that is certainly their recommendation, and they, not just for traveling meals, they had other reasons for expanding the kitchen. Do you have any more data on that? Another expert.
Traveling meals was the most urgent need, definitely, for commercial kitchens, but in the research preparing for kind of our Plan B, if we really needed it for that, we did a lot of research on other councils on aging, and they have just much more robust food offerings outside of traveling meals, so being able to serve more meals at the center for any patron who's there that needs it, and doing cooking classes. Right now, it's kind of, I'd say, like hobby classes, as opposed to being able to address some food security issues that we have townwide. So I think it's traveling meals, but a lot more than that. And I'd just say in terms of the construction pairing, I think there was discussion, if we needed to split, that the kitchen and the back door may need to be paired together, depending on how those designs play out, just because of the proximity, so those might not be able to be chunked out from each other.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Article 33.
Under Article 33, the annual town meeting in 2024 voted unanimously, as it turns out, to appropriate $2.3 million for the design of expanding the Cogswell Building to move the fleet operation, the mechanic's bays, and the vehicle maintenance for about... Dave, help me out. How many vehicles? 100-plus vehicles that they're maintaining over? All town vehicles except public safety that they're maintaining there. And the, this request is the first phase of addressing the real needs of the Department of Public Works, but in this in particular, these phases are completely distinct, so this phase doesn't require the next phase. The next phase is clearly required, but when it happens and where it happens will be, you know, future conversations, so.
But the next phase can't happen unless this phase happens, correct?
Correct. And the next phase, it could depend on where the Pollard gets rebuilt, you know, because there's conversations about, the MSBA is requiring them to look at another site, and so there, we really can't recommend the next phase until we know what's happening with Pollard. Not just financially, but also logistically.
This new facility will help to maintain the fleet, not just house the fleet, right?
Yes, it's maintaining the fleet. There's some storage at Jack Cogswell, but there's also storage still at 470.
Okay.
We did have a tour last week for the Finance Committee, and we will be having a tour for town meeting members, and we're going to have a special select board tour, if you like. It's just really illuminating, I think.
But this facility is going to have, like, the wash bays and stuff that we don't...
But this, this facility is going to have like the wash bays and stuff that we don't currently have, but.
The wash bay will be at 470 eventually.
Wherever that is.
We're here for that. Or, yeah. 470 is slang for wherever DPW ends up.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Madam Chair. Oh, go ahead, Mary.
Go ahead.
No.
Maria.
I move the select board recommended adoption of Article 33.
Second.
More, more discussion?
Yeah, this was another one that I turned on because I feel like there was more. Well, I stated before, I still think phases two and three are higher priority than phase one. And this site at, at the Cogswell Building is just a very expensive site to build on. Like it's in wetlands, it's on ledge, it's all different places. If, if there's a question about where we're going to build the other sites and it's dependent on Pollard, is there any benefit in figuring that out first? I heard, and I can't confirm, but parcel 74 is back on the table now?
Well, you know, it, it's always been on the table for people doing studies. Town meetings had its own opinions about whether it's back on the table, so, I mean.
And it's also not an easy site to build on, but.
If we're looking, you know, the number of years out that we're looking, the conditions that these employees are working in and their ability to maintain the fleet that we have to keep DPW operations going, you know, we wholeheartedly believe this is first. They'll also relocate out without needing temporary quarters. And the space, such as it is, which isn't great, can be used by Parks and Forestry, Highway and Water and Sewer. They take up more than a quarter of the building in terms of their shop areas. It is co-located to the RTS and the RTS is actually our biggest user of the mechanics and the fleet. And we actually had a traffic study that showed a decline in traffic because the RTS vehicles aren't driving down Arc Tree to get to the DPW building. So we do have, we do have an FAQ that we're presenting to the Finance Committee. And tomorrow, we'll be happy to send along to you.
I guess back to the theme of uncertainty. Just as a general proposition, I'm thinking it may be good to start things sooner rather than later and get them done, you know? I see costs only liable to go up.
Yeah.
I mean, that's a, that's an impression, you know?
Yeah, I'm thinking.
Series of facts.
I know. And I mean, I guess I'm thinking in terms of the phases. So like phase two is serves many more people than phase one. That's why I think it's a higher priority. And so like starting that one, starting phase two earlier would, in my mind, be better.
But at this point, if we were to do that, that would mean not voting for this and that we would have to wait right to a future town meeting to appropriate.
We don't know where we can put phase two.
Right.
Right, because we haven't sized any other site to see if it could fit this function.
But this is land that we own and it's adjacent to other, another building that we have and another operation that we have next door, so.
Well, and its co-location with that other operation is compelling in terms of operational benefits as well.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm not saying, I like that idea. I'm just saying like, let's put all, everything on the table to let people know what is being considered.
Yeah, but it was.
I feel like that has already happened.
We had consultants look at this. And in fact, doing the Cogswell Building was what made doing phase two possible at a cheaper rate. So I think this is a better play. This is the winning hand is to do Cogswell so that we can start focusing on two, wherever and whenever that may be. But it was definitely seen that phase one was making phase two possible.
Is it too much to ask that we vote on this next week?
I mean, I'm happy to vote on it next week, but what, what is the, what are you going to find out in the meantime? What do you, like, what's your process?
I'm in the process of scheduling a meeting with Charis so I can ask her more questions. I can, you know, gather more information.
All right. I hope you'll report that back.
Yes.
Okay. We can defer.
Thank you.
So Article 34.
This is the public works infrastructure as included in the capital plan.
Madam Chair, I recommend the town meeting adopt Article 34.
Second. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Article 35.
Similarly, the sewer enterprise fund cash capital that was included in the capital plan for, I move the select board recommend adoption of Article 35.
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, don't screw it on a sewer.
And just, just a note. We were talking about Cooksbridge earlier. We have a sewer pump station at the Cooksbridge facility and it really does need us to take care of it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
36.
Under 36, we had recommended $1 million for sewer system infiltration and flow to, and to be able to use the MWA and other state loan programs in order to continue to withdraw the infiltration and the infiltro, inflow into our systems. Yeah.
Madam Chair, I move that the select board recommend adoption of Article 36.
Second. Discussion?
My statement about Article 35 stands for this one.
I can see where this is headed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Article 37.
Under Article 37, this is the water enterprise fund cash capital that was included in the capital plan, including HEAC upgrades at the water treatment plant, water distribution system improvements master plan, other system design and the fleet.
I move the select board recommend adoption of Article 37.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Excuse me, I just noticed there's a missing dollar sign in the second to last row. I don't know if that's worth an amendment.
I'm sure my own.
I do not, I, I will not speak for town council, but I don't think the dollar sign is required.
Article 38?
Because the total is the appropriate.
Right.
Under Article 38, this was a conversation with the board and we were able to identify $500,000 in water enterprise fund retained earnings to continue this program.
Madam Chair, I recommend that town meeting adopt Article 38.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
39.
Under Article 39, rescinding debt authorizations, a small amount for the Jack Cogswell Building and a significant amount from the public safety building construction. You recall, we had a separate supplemental appropriation because of the hazardous materials we found at Station Two and because of the ongoing additional COVID costs that we were worried about. But the project team managed to keep, spend almost, you know, just a little bit of it. So kudos to them for being able to rescind this.
Madam Chair, I just remember how much angst and discussion there was about what amounted to be less than $100,000.
It's easier to look at it in the past.
I move that the select board recommend adoption of Article 39.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Article 40. Woo, this is a marathon.
It is. Under Article 40, we propose amendment to the general bylaw under contract procedures, essentially to modernize what we consider to be fuel and what we consider to be software. So the, the strict interpretation of software is that it didn't include hosting agreements, like things that we host in the cloud instead of buying software and hosting it here. So we want to make sure we can procure those services for the 10-year period. And the same is true for oil. It would include energy resources, electricity, fuel, propane and natural gas and oil. Those, that's a five-year purchase.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I move that the board vote to support Article 40 in the annual town meeting warrant.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
41.
Whoever has 41 should start now. This one is a great program for a few people who are going to be able to take advantage of it, part of the HERO Act. And we want to adopt every single possible exemption that we can, but it's complicated to explain. So the HERO, the HERO Act added two new local options that are going to increase some of the veterans exemptions. And so we're happy to sort of maybe map that out or show an example of what that might look like. But the, when push comes to shove, what we're really trying to do is if there's something that can help a veteran in, who's in need of property tax exemptions, we want to make sure that we've got all of them covered.
I move the select board recommend adoption of Article 41.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Article 42.
Under Article 42, the retirement board asks that the town meeting consider increasing the maximum base upon which the retiree cost of living is based from $16,000 per year to $18,000 per year. For years, this was capped at $12,000, but communities now can have the ability to go up higher than that. So if you think about a social security benefit that somebody might be receiving and there's a COLA, the COLA is on the entire benefit. For public employees, the COLA is only on that $16,000 currently, or $18,000 as they're proposing.
So essentially, it means that the COLA for a retiree goes from $480 per year to $540 per year. Now, there is an impact actuarially for this, but given the, for the folks who have pensions that, you know, that are pretty low, this could be a pretty big help for them, so. And the Finance Committee did recommend adoption.
Madam Chair, does this also impact our retirement assessments for next year?
It will be built into the actuarial the next time the retirement board does it. And I have the, I can get you the amount.
I move the select board recommend adoption of Article 42.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Article 43 is our regular appropriation to the athletic facility improvement fund. We have a, a new proposal under the special town meeting warrant, but this is just the regular one that we do every year.
Madam Chair, I move the board vote to support Article 43.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
44.
As the board will remember, working with the Finance Committee, we adopted new targets and formulas for some of our stabilization funds, one of which is the capital facility fund, which the guidance is 2% of free cash allocation in a year. And so this was based on our, we had originally, I think we told you at your last meeting, we increased this because we were estimating an increased free cash. So this is approximately 2% of our certified free cash. So it's great to see that we're able to start putting in place the programs that we, the board adopted in the capital planning.
Madam Chair, I move the board vote to support Article 44.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so Article 45 has been pulled. Well, I, I've seen emails from the proponents that they intend to withdraw it. So I'm, you know, making sure that they get in touch with the moderator on how the moderator wants them to do that. I don't expect it to move forward, but I'm working on that.
So can we defer the vote on this?
Yeah, I don't suspect you'll need to vote it, yes. I just wanted to be clear that it, it can't be withdrawn except for by a mechanism that they work with the moderator on. It's not like you can withdraw.
Oh, yeah, okay. I get it. And then Article 46.
Do you want to vote on that next week or?
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that.
Well, now, I don't care, but usually if we discuss it, we don't vote it, that we.
Yeah, I think that's wise, give it a little time to sink in. So we'll defer.
I also noted that they said they were going to amend it, so I'll include that in there.
And then we don't need to vote on an omnibus, right?
Nope. Just the special.
Okay, but I'm gonna take the chair's prerogative to have a bio break before we. Five-minute recess.
I know somebody else who's in April 50th, he's a volunteer. I'm wondering who he is, so you're in good company. Two years in a row?
Oh, wait.
No. My birthday was found today because of some media. I know. Some people say they feel like they've come sighted off. Look at you, Cher.
No, she's very, very busy. She's always very cultured.
Now he says it isn't.
It's your birthday.
Very confusing. Well, they're talking about, you know, nuclear war, so. Could be worse.
That's not funny, except for nine o'clock at night.
All right. All right, are we good to re-zoom? Excellent, all right, we're back. Re-zoom. Let's just meet. I wish it was meeting. Let's just make it tighter. I wish it was moving clever. Okay, so we're recommencing with the, the Article Decisions review, and we're starting with Article 1 of the Special Town Meeting Warrant.
So every special, you'll see appropriating for public education government programming, which is the money we receive that we pass through to the Needham Channel. So in order to make sure that they have the cash flow that they need, we just do that at every special, the funds that we've received since the last special.
Madam Chair, I move that the Board vote to support Article 1 in the Special Town Meeting Warrant.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Article 2?
So under Article 2, Madam Chair, in 2023, we had an article to appropriate the $30,000 that was provided to the town through the special permit conditioned by the Planning Board for Children's Hospital. It was intended and written in the special permit as intersection improvements at Kendrick and Third. We had identified some street markings between Kendrick and the highway ramps that would affect, that would help this whole area. The, one of the ones that we wanted to do, Mastat just couldn't agree with, and the other one that we identified, they did. So we've been in limbo in terms of having to spend $30,000 and not having a project for it. We approached Children's Hospital and asked them if they would be willing to get a minor de minimis change to their special permit to allow us to use the money at Kendrick and Fourth, because there's another condition in the special permit that says they are funding a feasibility of the warrant, meaning whether Kendrick and Fourth meets the state's warrant for a signalized intersection, which anybody who's ever tried to turn left out of Fourth will tell you is probably a foregone conclusion. Children's is providing the town with $25,000 to do that work. They were going to do it themselves, and they've just decided to give the money to us to do. And this remains, the $30,000 that was required under the permit will, it will be used for the design of the signalized intersection. So this is a project that's going to take a while, but first, we need the feasibility to make sure that it can be installed. Then there'll be an appropriation request in the capital plan for the design, which this $30,000 will supplement. And then there will be a request for, in the Public Works Infrastructure article. So, long-winded story to say, this is still going before planning to just change the street at which we want to get this $30,000 essentially off my desk.
Sorry, so what's the ETA for actual construction, are we saying?
It's not even in the capital plan yet.
Yeah, okay.
I imagine you'll see it next year in the capital plan.
Madam Chair, I move the Board vote to support Article 2 in the special.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
So Articles 3 and 4 are similar. They're transferring from salaried wages to expenses. We've had, in the year, difficulty in keeping all of the positions filled, and so there's some work that's needed to have been contracted out. We are getting a lot closer to full staff. You can see the sewer department is at full staff now, and water is getting closer. But these are line item transfers between lines that the Department of Public Works is requesting.
I move the Select Board recommend adoption of Articles 3 and Article 4 in the Special Town Meeting.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
The Board heard presentation on the floodplain zoning earlier?
This is the Water Enterprise budget.
Oh, we did that.
No, no, no.
We did that.
Sorry, I thought we were still on, sorry. I moved 3 and 4.
3 and 4, I'm sorry, I missed that. Okay. 5 and 6 probably could go together, too.
Yes, I would think so.
Do you want to vote on them next week or today, given? Let's just do it today.
I'm happy to do it today. Any objections?
Let's do it.
We don't have any option but to adopt them, actually.
Yeah, right. Let's not make a meal of it. Madam Chair, I move that the Board vote to support Articles 5 and 6 in the Special Town Meeting Warrant. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Hang on, let's find the end of this. Sage 10. Article 7?
So under Article 7, in 2023, the town clerk had requested the town meeting determine that the town hall is closed on Saturdays in order to make the last day to register to vote for a town election Friday. The current town clerk thinks it's confusing because the state and federal state elections require Saturday to be open. In fact, she was open for annual, for the town's annual town meeting. So I think the cleanest thing is to rescind the determination that Saturdays were closed, since it's not the case.
Madam Chair, I move that the Board vote to support Article 7 in the Special Town Meeting Warrant.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Article 8?
Articles 8 and 9 are also together, and this is the presentation that Miles made to you about a month ago. In terms of modernizing our senior corps program and the Veterans' Tax Workoff Program, we will be providing the Board with policy implementation memo and decision-making in terms of things like income limits and things like that. When are we doing that?
After town meeting if they choose to.
Sounds reasonable.
Right.
I move that the Select Board recommend adoption of Articles 8 and 9.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
One of the questions we had at the Finance Committee is, you know, is there a limit, because this is funded by the overlay, is there a limit on how much could be spent? We were appropriating for a long time, about $25,000 for the senior corps. We haven't been expending it. The Board could put a limit on in your, in your policy guidance for this program, if you wanted to do that. We don't expect it to be, you know, we're trying to get more people involved, but we don't expect it to be a huge, a huge cost item, but that's certainly something you could do.
Okay. Article 10, we just heard about this evening, and Dave said he's going to be bringing us more information next week, so let's defer. And Article 11? Skip the stuff. Madam Chair, I move Town Meeting Warrant.
Second.
Discussion.
I continue to be not a fan, but I understand that I'm the only one.
No, I think I'm with you, actually. And I, I mean, all this talk about tariffs and stuff actually has moved even further towards your direction. Like, these are all things that businesses can do voluntarily if they choose to. And we can, you know, help educate them about alternatives. You know, we can take other actions to promote these initiatives. I'm a little uncomfortable with forcing them to.
Yeah, it did sound, though, like the businesses would appreciate having a little cover to do this without getting flack from customers, which I understand. So that would be my rationale for, you know, choosing to do it.
That's what the first one, that's the first provision. But there are other provisions, so like, where is this? Full-service food establishments, utilize only reusable food and beverage, service ware. So like, I don't know if we ever discussed that.
Kathy clarified that. She says, just, it's certain, there's a classification of restaurants that would be required to do that. Wouldn't be like McDonald's or Dunkin' Donuts. Or quick, or fast casual. It wouldn't be fast casual. There was, she did clarify that.
Generally speaking, in the long run, that would save them money, theoretically.
Sure, but I'd still prefer it be their choice.
Yeah. Any other discussion? Okay. All, wait, we have a motion, right? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Those against?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, 3 to 2?
We do. Doubt.
Okay.
Okay. And Article 12?
Black plastic. Which is plastic and not blastic, if you.
Thanks.
Remember, this is a big draft. I do like it. It's almost worth keeping.
We can keep it.
We are keeping it, right?
No, it's a draft still.
It did force me to go looking at the actual document to confirm that it's there.
Madam Chair, I move that the Board vote to support Article 12 in the Special Town Meeting Warrant.
Second.
Discussion.
Again, I'm not in favor.
Yeah, I think, I think I am, I would like to say that I understand that the Board of Health is supporting this article based on health concerns, or at least have discussed doing so. I think the health concerns are real, but I don't feel like I can lay this on our businesses at this time.
Yeah, but I feel this, this is, are we letting Town Meeting make the decision? I mean, I have no problem with that.
Yeah, we're bringing it to Town Meeting, but this is a question of whether we support it, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, I continue to support this based on the lack of recyclability, the health concerns, as well as the fact that in Newton, it seems to have gone absolutely fine. So in fact, the chamber told us it was fine until the people, some of the people in Needham didn't like it, but those people in Newton actually experienced it for a year and found it to be fine. So I continue to support this, but I understand if I'm not in the truth.
Any other discussion? Okay, so the motion is to support black plastic. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those against?
Nay.
Okay, so 2 to 3, not to support. How do I write this so I remember what that means? Okay. But it will still go in front of Town Meeting. Okay, Article 13?
Article 13 is to appropriate $161,128 to the Capital Equipment Fund based on the sale of surplus equipment.
I move the Select Board recommend adoption of Article 13 on the Special Town Meeting Warrant.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Article 14?
Article 14 is enacting another one of the proposals that we brought to you with respect to stabilization funds, and that would be to amend the Athletic Facility Improvement Fund to accept not only the annual appropriations that are recommended and approved by Town Meeting, but to allow dedication without further appropriation into the fund 40% of the Rosemary Pool use fees. We met with the Park and Rec Commission in January, and they were supportive of this idea that we would essentially dedicate some of the revenue associated with pool use for repairs to that pool in terms of things like pumps and motors and things that we can be planned for. And Dave set the amount at 40% based on the kinds of equipment replacements that Park and Rec visions over the coming years.
Maybe I misstated something before. I thought that we had a revolving fund for the pool. Do we not?
Just the summer program? I'm sorry, the camp.
Okay, okay, so, okay.
Not for this.
Okay.
I move the Select Board recommend adoption of Article 14 in the Special Town Meeting Warrant.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Well done.
Are we done?
Okay, so next, we're trying to find times to meet. This is going to be the longest part of the evening.
So if we could start with the Off Leash Dog Area Pilot Joint Meeting. Unfortunately, because Park and Rec meets on Monday, they haven't rescheduled their meetings in May, but they are meeting June 9th and June 23rd. There are a number of meetings on those days, but I wonder if perhaps the quorum of the Board could meet with the Park and Rec Commission on the 9th?
June.
Or the 23rd of June. So TCHOC and Large House are meeting, and GBRC and Large House are meeting on those days.
Yeah, so I have things on both those.
The 23rd?
June. So you'll be remote anyway if that, right?
We're talking about the evenings?
A Park and Rec meets at 7?
Is there a Large House on the 23rd?
Yes.
I don't have that on my calendar.
I don't have it on my calendar.
I don't have Large House on my calendar on the 23rd, but that general bylaws on the 23rd could just be that we didn't go far enough out.
On my calendar.
I got that from Lee, I think. I think she said it was if absolutely necessary kind of a thing. Does that make sense?
Oh, I don't, okay.
I can do either of those dates.
I look open as long as there's not Large House.
On the 23rd?
One of us could always not go to Large House and thereby have a quorum.
Yeah, quorum's 3.
June 23rd.
Right, so Josh can do it, Kevin can do it, and then one of us.
Yeah, okay. So which meeting was this for?
This is the joint meeting with the Park and Recreation Commission on the Off Leash Pilot at Rosemary Lake.
Can you confirm the time?
We will confirm the time, yep.
But we think it's at 7?
They may do 6:30, do you think?
They normally meet at 7, but we could do, we could ask them to do the public meeting at 6, 7 on Off Leash, or.
I would prefer 7, if that's possible.
7.
If we were to find that Large House was also meeting that night, if there's a way to navigate both of them, I would appreciate that. But meanwhile, I'm going to put a note on my calendar to hold it for that meeting.
Yeah.
We agreed on the 23rd?
Yep, 23rd.
Yes.
And time is 7.
Great, okay. Avery's online, so we get.
7 PM.
It's not determined yet. The, the goal is to meet at 7 to accommodate Josh's schedule, but bearing in mind Large House and the two people who have to go to that, so.
Yeah, catch up.
So grateful for Avery to be watching, helping us schedule. Really would like to schedule the Affordable Housing Trust with the six of you. I think this is a really important conversation, and so. Looking at May or June, I guess. Well, no, we're looking at May, unless you could be remote.
I can't be in person.
May 11?
May 11?
That's a Sunday.
It's also Mother's Day.
Haraum.
Thank you.
Hesitate to say May 6, but.
20th?
May 20th?
I was looking at that, too, I know. What about the 19th, 20th? Yeah, 20th.
What's wrong with the 20th?
No, the 20th is fine, yeah, yeah.
It's the 20th?
20th, yeah, yeah.
I can't do the 20th.
That week.
Oh, no.
Okay.
What about 22nd? Could do the 6th. Did we rule out the 6th?
We didn't rule it out, but it's a busy week.
The 6th?
Yeah.
Do you have the 6th, Kathy?
No, I can do the 6th.
I can do the 6th.
6.
It's just a lot of meetings that week.
It's a lot of meetings that week.
It is, but we have to be here because, you know, we have so many meetings. So, yeah, I can do the 6th.
Do we, oh, and the next week is, the 26th is the holiday, right? And Kathy, you're out the week of the 18th?
I am.
What about like the 27th or the 28th?
Well, that is, is the 27th the select?
We're meeting on the 27th.
Okay, then.
Let's just, sometimes if you.
Well, how do we have the general bylaw maybe so many times?
We have that. Every month. If you wanted to do May 27th, you just have to do it early, and I, you know, it's hard for people to get here early, so.
Or the 28th?
I'm not, Katie and I aren't here the 28th.
Is it, is it silly to do it, so town meeting is at 7:00, could we do it at 6:00 PM on Wednesday, the 7th? Before town meeting?
That's a long night, man. We're going to be there until like 11:30.
I know, that's not the idea.
It's hard for me to do anything.
I get that, yeah, okay. I guess it's the 6th then.
The 6th is probably the only option.
Okay.
What time?
Yeah, I don't like it, but that's the only option.
Can you do 6th, Josh?
I can, it's, yeah, I don't like it, I'll do it.
Okay.
Okay, so that's Affordable Housing Trust.
Yeah, do, you should check with her.
Is Avery good on the 6th?
Uh, checking.
We're waiting to ask her. Avery, is that you? You're muted if you're talking.
Thanks, I'm not working.
Can we enable the chat?
Yes, okay. But yes is to?
Oh, good.
May 6th?
May 6th?
Awesome. Uh, I can't read what Avery's saying. It's very far away. I think that Avery can do.
Updates needed on her Zoom like everyone else would.
May 6th is great.
May 6th is a yes. Okay, Avery, the last member of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund can do May 6th. Thank you, Avery.
We'd like baby pictures.
At, at 7:00 PM?
I think we just said 6.
6, okay.
You just said, I don't like.
And then we're going to get home.
You want to move it?
Yeah, that's fine. Do it, I'll do it.
That's like, um, yeah, that's like eight nights in a row.
Oh, my God.
Okay, we love the job.
Is it really?
Now the goal setting, though. All right. All right, now we have goal setting?
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, how many hours are we looking for?
Is there any July date that could possibly work?
Are you in, on a Saturday?
July 4th?
That's it. I'm not, I can't.
Aren't we busy in the morning on July 4th already?
Yes.
Nothing happening.
I have my duties, you know, as brand marshal.
Right.
Right.
Kate's got to get glammed.
And that's actually, uh, Kate Fitzpatrick's last day. Wow. 11:59.
You have to go there, huh?
Yeah, it, over there.
Can we do an evening meeting?
Kathy can't do anything except for.
She can't do weekday, she's not over here.
I'm going to be not in meetings.
Three hours is too long to be on Zoom.
So are we looking at a weekend? Is that what we're looking at, or?
If it's July, I can do a Saturday.
You can?
I'll just fly home.
Okay.
I only have one Saturday left in July, which is the 26th, so who knows who else that's bad for, but.
I can do that.
I can do that.
Okay, I need to make more summer plans. That's all I can say.
July 26th?
Oh, my goodness.
What timeframe are we thinking? Nine to noon, eight to 11.
Nine to noon's great.
First thing in the morning?
Sure.
What better way is there to spend a Saturday?
In the summer.
Well, you know, if it's Memorial, it'll be quite cool.
Oh, yeah, right, extra sweaters, everybody.
Saturday.
Nine to noon.
Nine to noon.
Oh, wait a minute, I just. Okay.
Calendars are easy, what, what took us so long?
Best idea ever.
All right.
Wow, it's done.
All right, and I've given you my full report, so you're back on committee reports.
Oh, right, committee reports. So, uh, we last heard about Large House, do you have anything else you want to?
I do not have anything else to add to Large House.
Josh, you want to talk about anything?
Stormwater? We're continuing to meet. It almost seems like it's endless at this point, um, but we're aiming to have, still going to, to October town meeting with the bylaw. Before that, we are going to have a public listening session in June, I believe. And I believe there'll be a presentation with the select board around that time as well, separately to different types of meetings. And then regulations will probably be drafted over the summer or in the fall, so that at town meeting, there will be a draft ready, so that people can know what will be in them.
Yeah, I would just add that the committee's working hammer and tongs to get ready for October town meeting, and that's sort of, one seems so far away, but it's like, you just see the summer evaporate, and we'll have to do regulations. And I also appreciate everyone on the committee is working, I'll think, we're meeting twice a month.
We're meeting like every week at this point.
It's just, we're really going, and they're doing a lot of work, so I really appreciate everything, their contributions, because this is a big lift. Section 10 took three, three meetings to get through, so it'll be great. It takes a lot.
So the public hearing is in June, what, what, do you have a date already? Because like earlier is probably better.
I agree, oh, yes, yeah.
What specifically will town meeting be voting on?
A substitute bylaw. So we have an existing stormwater bylaw, which I think the consensus is that it doesn't read well and that it may not be as effective as we want it to be, and so this will be a substitute bylaw.
And it, um, within eye towards not just stormwater quality, but quantity, and how basically construction will happen and earth moving will happen to prevent sort of the excesses of water flowing into neighbors' yards and how we capture our stormwater. Much needed.
So does, how much of that gets specified in the bylaw and how much gets specified in the regulations? A lot of it's in the regulations, right?
Yes, yes. In the bylaw, the bylaw has to be approved by town meeting, so, but the regulations are approved at the, you know, select board level, and that can be much more tactical information that can sort of, as it, as it changes, as best practices changes, we can update that.
The way I think about it is that the bylaw is the what, like what is being regulated, and the regulations are the how.
Anything else, Kevin?
Yeah, we have the negotiating subcommittee. We met, we're talking, and everything's an executive session. So we'll let you know. And then finally, Envision Needham met on the 7th, and they are going to, um, meet again later, but there'll also be, as you mentioned, the meetings for, um, on the 13th and the. Meetings for, um, business owners. That's coming. And that's all I got.
Since the last time we, have I updated you, or I don't remember?
Has that really been since?
It was a long time.
It feels like a long time ago.
It's been a while since we've met, so, um, so I think our numbers of Needham students going to Minutemen are down a little bit, um, but they seem to be doing well with their new superintendent, they have, um, a good agreement with Leslie University to use their fields, which is helping them out financially. They're at a point now where almost all of their slots are going to in, what are them?
In district.
In district communities. Which is good, I mean, it means the in district are really using it. I think there are some financial issues because the out of district, I think, pay a little more, as much as I understand. It was hard to understand, actually, that part of the presentation. They did have some concerns because the state may be imposing, um, some regulations on their admissions process to make it more of a lottery. Now, I think they've managed to convince the state that they still have to give a certain allotment to each town, but the concern that they had is that, um, you know, there are, there are some students, and I don't know that this would happen so much for Needham, frankly, but, um, there are some students that apply that don't necessarily, they're not necessarily committed to, um, a vocational education, and they would rather admit students that know what a vocational education is and affirmatively want that, you know, rather than students that might be wanting to leave their own district for some other reason.
Well, and the concern is that the students would apply, but then when it came to coming, they would show up on day one and then say, oh, I'm going back to my district, I don't like the bus ride, I don't like this education, I don't like whatever, so, that they're not really as well informed. I don't know what happened with the state education board meeting, if there was a decision made, because when we met, there was an anticipation that a decision would be made on that lottery short term. I don't think we've received any information. So.
Okay, great, thanks, I know. Okay, well, I attended the Needham Diversity Initiative Standout on Saturday in the cold and the rain, actually Kevin was there as well. I also went this week, this week, last week? I honestly just can't remember. Last week, uh, to an inter-club service event that was held at the VFW. It was all six service clubs in Needham, the Village Club, the Knights of Columbus, the Rotary, the VFW, the Exchange Club, and the Women's Club, and they built birthday boxes for, um, kids who, or families who don't have the means to celebrate, so it's sort of a birthday in a box, really nice, uh, group, really nice work, um, excellent cause, so I just wanted to give them a little shout out. Uh, I also wanted to acknowledge the election results and say congratulations to all the winners, and also thank you to everyone who participated, and that means all the candidates, but all the, all the support, uh, people who stood in the rain, people who did mailings, all the stuff. It's excellent to have so much engagement, and I hope it continues, and I hope that everyone who participated, even if your only participation was voting, will stay engaged. There are news sources that you should sign up for, the Town Newsletter, the Newsflash from the Town on topics that might be of particular interest to you, the Needham Observer, the Needham Local, uh, they all have fabulous, uh, resources that we should all take advantage of and make sure that we all stay up to date on the breadth of town issues and topics. And I also want to just, uh, remind everyone that appointment season is coming up. Needham has 52 standing boards and committees, all of which, uh, many of which are appointed, and many of which are appointed by the select board, and some of which are there. There is an expiration of terms coming up at the end of June, and so people should feel free to peruse the volunteer opportunities that are listed on the website, and there's a very easy and short form you can fill out if you're interested for some of the open board positions, so I encourage you to do that. Also, I want to say happy Passover to those who are celebrating this week, um, and before we meet again, uh, many will be celebrating Easter, so happy Easter. Next week is school vacation week, or the, next week, and Marathon Monday, so good luck to everyone who's running, and so far, the weather looks really good. That's all.
Awesome.
And now would you welcome a motion?
I would welcome a motion.
Must be adjourned.
Unless Kevin wants to stay here all night.
I move that the select board adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.
I'm used to the much louder.